Good evening and welcome to our city council meeting. It is 6:00 PM on March the 24th. And Vice Mayor Cruz, to answer your question, yes, I think I saw Jennifer hop on. So our, yep, our student liaison has joined us. Thank you all for being here with us this evening. We've got a bit of a long one for you, so we will go right ahead and get started, beginning with, called order, I did that, Pledge of Allegiance. Vice Mayor Cruz, would you like to lead us tonight?
Let's go ahead. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United-
Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Cruz. I do appreciate it. And Irene, a roll call, please.
Councilmember Bagby. Councilmember Lamb.
President.
Councilmember Walter.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Here.
And Mayor Turner.
Here. Thank you, Irene. We'll go ahead and do a report out of closed session. Jose, please.
Yes, Mayor, the council considered a couple items under closed session. No reportable action was taken.
Thank you, Jose. Move on to Conflict of Interest Declaration. Any conflict of interests or any items on our agenda this evening from any staff or council members? Seeing none. We'll move on to Agenda Review for our regular session. Staff, council members, any requested changes to our agenda this evening?
Mayor, there are requested changes from staff.
All right, that's going to move us into public comment. As a matter of fact, I missed a quick little opening remark that I need to do that I tend to forget. Real quickly here, in response to the recent resurgence of coronavirus cases in the council and continuing concerns of the government of California and the county public health officer about potential community spread of the virus resulting, of the virus resulting from prolonged indoor gatherings, the city has suspended conducting in-person city council meetings in order to minimize the spread of the COVID-19 virus and pursuant to the provisions of the Governor's Executive Order N-29-20, which suspended certain requirements of the Brown Act. If you have not been with us before, the link to Zoom is on the agenda, which can be located on the City of Cloverdale website. If you are on Zoom and wish to speak during public comment or when any particular item on the agenda is open to the public, please use the raise hand function and that will alert Irene and myself that you would like to speak. If you are just dialing in and do not have a computer at your disposal, *9 will indicate to Irene that you have raised your hand. And if you are joining us on YouTube, you are live with about a 30-second delay. So thank you for that. I will move back into public comment here. Any person wishing to speak to the city council on any item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Members of the public have the right to speak on any items on the council agenda during that item. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. Attendees will be muted until they are called upon for public comment. To make a public comment, use the raise hand icon as we discussed before or dial *9 with your phone. With that being said, Irene, are there any hands up?
No hands are raised, Mayor.
All right, we'll give that about three heartbeats, make sure it stays the same, and I will close public comment. All right, public comment is closed. We'll move on to our proclamations and presentations. First, we'll have our student liaison report from our student liaison, Jennifer Ramirez, and then I'm going to be handing the dais over to Vice Mayor Cruz, who will take us through the next proclamations, and then we'll get into some presentations from that point on. So, Student Liaison, Jennifer Ramirez, how's life been? How you doing? Floor is yours.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. With regards to all council members and others, as you all know, Cloverdale is in the red tier, which is excellent news. You know what that means, students going back to school on a hybrid model schedule after spring break. Over this week, we have shorter 30-minute classes. Since teachers are preparing for the hybrid schedule after spring break, which lasts from March 29th to April 12th, all students have finished half of their class periods, 1, 2, 3 now, and we are on to finishing the other half of classes, which are periods 4 to 7. Cloverdale High School is taking serious precautions with rules for the hybrid schedule. For example, no outside visitors, COVID self-check daily, wash hands and sanitize frequently, bring your own materials to class, like markers and your Chromebook, of course, and no off-campus privileges for students. The hybrid model consists of students' last names in school Monday and Tuesday. Students with M through C last names will attend school Tuesday and Friday. Mondays will be live online on Zoom for all students due to wellness Wednesday. Sports are conditioning, but competitions against other teams are to be determined or will likely not happen. I wanted to make a small note about the Plan Plantar program, which I believe is a great idea to the, to get Cloverdale's community together again. Since the coronavirus occurred, events have decreased and particular, particular events like this one to paint barrels, encourage people's creativity, and it's something to do to engage in community work with others, which I will be doing as well. And that, that will be all.
Thank you, Jennifer. We always appreciate it. Any questions or comments for our student liaison this evening? Irene, have any hands gone up maybe to ask our student liaison a question at this time?
No hands have gone up, Mayor.
Excellent. Well, thanks again, Jennifer, and please join us for as long as you can, but if you have homework or if this meeting ends up running real long, please consider yourself excused when you're ready. All right, moving right along, I'd like to hand the dais over to Vice Mayor Cruz to lead us through the next two proclamations, please.
The next proclamation is City Proclamation Recognizing March 31st as Cecil Chavez Day, and it should also say learning and service. That is the, what we are celebrating at the end of this month. And I would like to announce that we have tours, pre-scheduled tour, tours of the water plant and the wastewater plant for students and parents. And we're also going to have a group of volunteer students serve during the food distribution on Monday. They will also be passing about little scoopers of grease so that it doesn't contaminate our pipes and doesn't go into our waters. So we're also going to have a small, mini scholarships for students graduating from high school whose parents are farmworkers. And in April, we, three volunteers from La Familia Sana and myself will be reading stories to the elementary school. So this is all in celebration of Cecil Chavez and his legacy. And it reads as such, whereas Cecil Estrada Chavez was born March 31st, 1927, on a small family ranch near Yuma, Arizona. After serving our nation in World War II, Cecil Chavez returned to farm labor in Calif, in California and began advocating for farm workers' rights. On April 23rd, 1993, Cecil Chavez passed away, leaving behind an enduring legacy of service and leadership. And whereas Cecil Chavez's influence has made a lasting impact on farm labor issues and inspired millions of Latinos to achieve educational and political success. And whereas Cecil Chavez's leadership will be remembered for utilizing the principles of nonviolence and service to community. And whereas Cecil Chavez founded the National Farm Workers Association, which ultimately became the United Farm Workers of America, UFW, AFL-CIO, the first successful farm workers' union in United States history. Under Cecil Chavez's tireless leadership, the UFW was the first to win collective bargaining rights for farm workers. And whereas the UFW's collective bargaining agreement significantly improved the quality of life of farm workers throughout the United States. And whereas in 1994, Cecil Chavez was posthumously awarded the President Medal of Freedom, the highest civilian honor in the United States. And whereas Cecil Chavez's birthday, March 31st, individuals and organizations throughout this nation will celebrate his life and work by participating in community service projects. Now therefore be resolved that the 31st day of March shall only be known as Cecil Chavez's Day of Service and Learning in order to reflect and honor the life of this distinguished leader, promote the principles of nonviolence and service to community. Then, we also have the City Proclamation Recognizing March 24th as Equal Pay Day. And I'm going to read the first three, and it's a very long one. And so I'm going to read. Whereas more than 50 years after the passage of the Equal Pay Act, women, especially minority women, continue to suffer the consequences of unequal pay. And whereas, according to the U.S. Census Bureau, women working full-time year-round in 2017 typically earn 82% of what men earn, indicating little change in progress and pay equity. And whereas, according to graduating to a pay gap, a 2012 research report by the American Association of University Women, the gender pay gap is evident one year after college graduation, even after controlling from, for factors known to affect earnings, such as occupation, hours worked, and college major. This continues to be a problem today, and I am accepting this on behalf of the Commission on the Status of Women here in Sonoma County and celebrating that we still need to work a lot to achieve equal pay, even though there is an act already in the books. So Wednesday, March 24th, symbolizes the time of 2021, when the wages paid to American women catch up to the wages paid to men from the previous year. And let's hope that is true. Thank you very much, and we'll move on to the agenda. Mayor?
Sorry, Mayor, just real quick, we do have Rebecca here from the Hillsburg chapter of the AAUW. Rebecca, if you have a few words.
That is, Rebecca, it is fantastic to see you. I had no idea you'd be joining us this evening. And when I saw your name on the participant list, I was, I was anxious to see the, the context. So please allow me to welcome you to our meeting and please.
Well, thank you so much. It's great to see you too. It's been a long time. So I'm Rebecca Lalande, and I'm actually a board member for your local branch of the AAUW. And we are a national organization. And in California alone, we have 119 branches with 10,000 members, and our mission really is to advance equity for women and girls through education, research, and advocacy. And I have to say that this pandemic has really hit women harder than any other group. And the economic disaster that women have experienced through the pandemic is going to take them decades to recover from. And so the fact that we already were behind the egg ball around equity pay, this is really an important issue. And I congratulate your town council for doing it actually on the day. And so we really appreciate the acknowledgement, and we are always here if you have anything that you need for us to get involved with as far as women and equity. So thank you again for, for everything.
Thank you, Rebecca. We really appreciate the, the kind words and being here to support Equal Pay Day on March 24th. And I don't mind embarrassing you just a little bit. Through a, through a, through an indirect assignment, I, I worked for Rebecca for four or five months, and there, there is not another leader that I can think of that has the drive and ability to, to really guide a complex organization as it, as it pertains to quality, as I, as I witnessed with Rebecca Lalande. And so with her having this leadership role for a, a local entity within our town, I, I consider us very lucky and encourage anybody who would like to reach out to her or get involved to, to take her up on that offer. And Rebecca, may we trouble you to put your contact information as appropriate in our chat?
I definitely will do that. And just to let you know, I spent all day today on, on the phone and Zoom with legislators advocating for many bills for women, including childcare and other issues that have come up. So AAUW is definitely very involved on many levels, both locally, the state, and national. And I'm here to advocate for women. So I will put my contact information in the chat.
Awesome. Thank you very much again for being here.
Thank you.
All right. Any comments from the public or any hands raised on those two proclamations by chance, Irene?
No hands are raised, Mayor.
All right. And again, I'd like to thank Vice Mayor Cruz for leading us through those. That brings us to our, our first presentation pertaining to the long-term financial forecast model. This will be from Management Partners. And without further ado, David, I imagine you'll offer a high-level introduction, and we'll get right into it.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick background on this item. This is a, a presentation by Management Partners. We'll be joined by Rick Leland tonight and other staff with Management Partners to provide an updated presentation to a financial forecast that was originally presented to council in August 2019. After the impact of COVID, we retained Management Partners to, to prepare an update to assess the impact of, of the pandemic on the city's financial resources. And in October, the, the, there was a presentation to the Finance Admin and Police Subcommittee. Since that time, you know, some conditions have changed within the city relative to our financial position. And we requested Management Partners to, to do a further update of the financial forecast. And what you're going to see tonight is a, a relatively fresh perspective on the impact of COVID on our financial forecast. In addition to the financial forecast, Management Partners also prepared an analysis of possible budget strategies. They did a really deep dive in terms of our, our budget and looked at, you know, budget strategies to enhance revenues and reduce costs to help ensure the, the, the financial well-being of the city. And part of their presentation tonight will be an overview of those strategies. So joining us with Bob Leland is Rick Hayden and Andy Belkner. And they bring with them, I, I think I can say over 50 years of experience in municipal management and municipal finance. And the, the reflection will, will be highlighted in their presentation. So without further ado, I'd like to turn it over to the Management Partners team.
Thank you, David. I'm Andy Belkner with Management Partners, and you're being very kind to us by saying we have a combined total of 30 years and in this area. But we do have a lot of experience with municipal finance. I'm going to start us off and then turn it over to Bob Leland to talk about the updated fiscal model. And then Rick and I will come back and talk about the status of the various sustainability strategies that we had suggested for Cloverdale some months back, when frankly, we thought COVID was going to have a more negative impact than it's actually turned out to have, which is always good. This slide just talks a little bit about the services that Management Partners provide. Probably the most salient fact about our firm is that we've been in continuous operation here in California under the same ownership with a lot of the same staff for 25 years now. And we've been privileged to serve a majority of the cities in the state of California. And with that, could we have the next slide, Bob? I think City Manager Kelly did a great job of sort of bringing the council up to date on the work that we've done. And so we, we initially presented our long-range forecast in August of 2019. And then we updated that most recently with the council's, the Finance and Public Safety Subcommittee. And we're here now to update it based on the fiscal year 21 budget year-to-date numbers. So this is fairly current information, including fiscal 21 assessed values and through the third quarter of '20 in terms of the sales tax forecast. And it is, is gratifying that the city's fiscal posture has actually improved since that time. One of the things that's improved the city's situation is the fact that the council put on the ballot and the voters did approve a, a longer, frankly, a, a, a non-sunsetted utility user tax, which is a, which is really a good thing for the city's finances. Bob, you want to take over and present the current forecast?
I will do that. Mayor and council members, I'm Bob Leland from Management Partners. Since you have a long agenda, we're going to jump right to it here. Things are better, and they are shown by this chart. On top is the view of the world that we had in September of last year, and on the bottom, the way things look now. At that time, there was a more pessimistic pandemic outlook. There was on this chart an assumption that the utility user tax would be renewed and that the pension tax calculations would be continued as they are currently done. There was a steady slide to about $300,000 positive balance by fiscal year '29. That was averaging about $190,000 of shortfall each year, as shown by this chart on the right. The way things look now, we do have the actuals for last year, the improved outlook from the pandemic, permanent UUT by Measure R. And while the balance is still declining, it's not as steep a decline. We would be ending at $1.4 million of balance in fiscal '29. And that's even with an assumed second recession that starts in fiscal '27. Over the last 100 years, recessions have come along on average about every six or seven years. So even though we're still clawing our way out of this one, you really need to look down the line at what might come next. And given the stress from that recession, you would still be well in positive territory, just below your reserve goal, which is the blue line. So ideally, you'd like to be at or above that. And we would be very close, based on this forecast, about an average of $150,000 shortfall a year. So let's just take a quick look at the major revenue assumptions and the rationale for them, and then we'll do expense. Mentioned the economic cycles. We have stronger sales tax, you know, performance. And we'll show you the hardest hit has been the transient occupancy tax and fees. And we are looking at a, the next recession in '27, and then seven years beyond that. In terms of other tax issues, the property tax typically has a 2% inflator under Prop 13, but because of the way that that inflator is calculated for the upcoming fiscal year, it will be 1.04%. And unfortunately, that's a, that's a loss that never gets to be made up. So we're assuming the 1% inflator for next year and 2% thereafter. The property tax also has built-in assumptions for ownership transfers and new construction in terms of about 30 new housing units annually. And again, the pension property tax, we're assuming a continuation of the current methodology in computing. We'll talk about that a little more later. The big news in terms of one-time funding is the American Rescue Plan Act. And so there is federal aid coming. We're looking at a $1,630,000 to the city. That is money that would have to be used by the end of fiscal 2024, and there are regulations pending in terms of eligible uses. But the real question is, does it enter into the forecast that we've just shown you? Does it make things better? Well, it might, and it might not. It depends on how you ultimately choose to use that money. If it comes into the general fund to replace lost revenues or to reimburse a prior or currently budgeted costs, then definitely that portion of the ARPA money would help this general fund forecast. But to the extent that it is used for spending that's not currently in the forecast for the general fund, then it would not have an impact. So it might be a little early. You need to determine what your policy will be relative to the use of that money as to whether or not it would change the numbers that we just showed you. I'm just going to go through the revenues very quickly, but to just reinforce what each of these charts shows. The blue line is history until you get past '21, and then it's the forecast. The red line is the long-term trend from 2004 to 2020. The green line is the trend of the most recent four years, fiscal '17 to '20. The magenta line here with the diamonds are the budget that the city's adopted. And so you can compare budget to actual for past years. And then the orange dot is the year-to-date, and then the green triangle, the year-to-date trend. And then there's a little dotted blue line, which is the forecast that we had last year. So you can right off the bat compare the solid blue line to the dotted line and see if it's better or worse. And just to emphasize that, we've got little dots, kind of like a traffic signal. In this case, if it's green, means we're better off than last year. Yellow, about the same. And if it's red, in this case, it means lower revenue. So you can see on the sales tax, the budget had been at about $1 million. And it was expected that the sales tax would be much harder hit than it has turned out to be. And that's been pretty true statewide of cities generally. We're looking at a, some dip, but not too much. You know, significantly above the, the budget. So that's the main news for sales tax. Utility tax was of course renewed, and it's been pretty stable in recent years. So there's not too much new there. Cannabis tax, that is significantly higher than the budget, which was about $100,000. Recently, it's coming in at closer to $400,000. You can see the year-to-date through February is already well above what the budget had been for the entire year. So we're expecting to see an ongoing trend, starting from $400,000 and growing going forward. So that is good news. Franchise tax is pretty stable. Transient occupancy tax, that is one where we are assuming that the budget, which is just over $150,000, will be what revenues fall to. You, you can see in recent years, we had pretty good growth going. That fell off in, in 2020, just from the last three months of that fiscal year and the pandemic's impact. And then there's been a continued decline. Last year, it was assumed that the worst hit would be in 2020, and it would begin improving. But again, throughout the state, we're seeing TOTs taking a harder hit. We think this is a pretty good estimate. I mean, based on the year-to-date, the trend is pretty much at what the budget is for this year. So we can expect to see that decline and a recovery over the next few years. Business license tax is expected to be a little bit better than what had been budgeted, and then it would continue on the red line, which is a long-term trend. On the property transfer tax, you can see it's fallen quite a bit from prior years, but it's been pretty stable at about $40,000 a year. And we're seeing a continuation of that. The major story here in terms of these other revenues really would, I guess, would be the inter-fund charges. That is something that is controlled by the city, but it's come in under budget the last few years. And to be on the safe side, we're trending based on the actual in 2020. Whereas last year, we had been assuming a, a much higher level. That is something that may vary from year to year and will bear watching. The transfers in from the retirement tax, we have at a little higher level based on assumed assessed value growth over time. And then you can see other, all other- And then you can see all other revenue had been much higher in past years. It's been steadily dropping, but we're assuming that that levels out at just over a million dollars ongoing. So now we switch to the expenditure side of the equation. The three major issues here are just issues of sustainability, cost escalation, and pensions. We don't have any full-time equivalent staffing growth built in. Obviously, with population and workload growth will come pressure to add new positions over time. To the extent that's done, that will obviously have an adverse impact on the bottom line. In terms of capital, equipment, CIP, we have an assumed $160,000 with 3% growth. And that compares to an average of about $80,000 over the last six years. Preventative maintenance is generally an issue with cities. In terms of helping make the city more sustainable over time, we have this assumption of $160,000 a year to help the city in making additional expenditures above and beyond what's currently in the budget. In terms of cost escalation, we're assuming a two-and-a-half percent increase, both for O and M costs and labor costs. On the labor side, of course, that's subject to meet and confer. It's the largest expense, so that's why we have an inflationary component built in for that. In terms of health, the last few years, as you'll see when we get to the charts, health has been running under budget. So we've assumed that health will come in at 90% of the fiscal twenty one budget and then grow at 3%. The issue on pensions is currently, CalPERS has a 7% assumed rate of return over time. And the same applies for its discount rate. We believe that the average returns will, as they have been gradually falling, we think they will continue to fall and that they'll be closer to 6.2%. And that the discount rate is going to phase into 6% over twenty years. Now, this chart shows you just a little more detail on this issue of pensions. The chart on the left shows the actual rate of return from nineteen ninety-two through twenty twenty. And the red line is the linear trend of the return over that period. So it has been headed downhill. Another way to look at it is in the blue box here, where we're looking at the last three years, five years, ten, twenty, and then all twenty-nine years. You can see that the average return over the last five years has been about 6.4%, which is under that 7% discount rate. Now, timing is everything, and if you take the ten-year period, it includes some times when returns were higher, and so the return is about 8.7%. And over the whole period, it's about 8.4%. But if you look over twenty years, it's just about 6%, which is what we think the long-term discount rate will be. And where we get to that is shown in the chart at the right. This is actually over a forty-year period, what the actual discount rate has been from CalPERS. And it has fallen from the eight-and-a-half to actually 8.75 for a couple of years, down to the current level of 7%. And if you just extend that trend, you hit 6% in twenty years. One in five of the nation's largest pension plans are already under a 7% discount rate. And clearly, pension reform advocates have urged a lower discount rate, which of course would make things much more difficult for local agencies, but they talk in terms of 4% to 5%. I don't think we're going that low, but 6% is a very reasonable assumption over time. CalPERS is currently reviewing its, both its asset allocation and the discount rate this calendar year. If they make a change, they'll make it in November and it will take effect starting in twenty twenty-two. So just a quick look at the expense items. Not much change, as you can see, in the salary and benefits. When you take into account vacancy savings, we're very close to budget over time. So this is, I think, a good forecast. On the retirement, long-term, we're a little bit higher in terms of costs, based on the latest numbers that come out of CalPERS's pension outlook forecast. And we download the numbers from that for for Cloverdale and you get a more comprehensive forecast than the the one that they come out with in paper once a year. For health, you can see just how much below budget the city has been for several years. We're expecting costs to increase and you can see that the year-to-date trend is right on this line. So we think that that's a good number for fiscal twenty-one and then we have grown from there. But that is higher than what had been projected in the last forecast. An item to take a look at is overtime. You can see that that has steadily grown. And there was a significant increase budgeted for fiscal twenty-one, even though to date, the numbers are coming in lower. Even the year-to-date trend's only about $200,000. So this is an area where the forecast may be conservative because we have gone ahead and assumed the budgeted amount for this year and then grown it from there. So when it comes time to re-examining future budgets and seeing how that ongoing shortfall can be whittled down, this is maybe an area to take a look at. The last slide on the expenses. O and M costs and contract services have also been coming in lower than budgeted the last few years. So we're assuming that the contract portion of that will be at 100% of the budget, but assume O and M at 95%. And then the consolidated amount there, we've gone ahead and grown at two-and-a-half percent going forward, which is a little lower than we had last year. I mentioned the capital outlay expenses earlier. In terms of debt service, the last several years have not reflected a portion of debt service that goes towards the successor agency. This isn't a large amount of money, but we have corrected for that. And so the ongoing forecast is at about $70,000 there. And then transfers out to other funds, we're assuming the budget for this year and growth going forward. So to just reiterate the current forecast, slow decline, about 150,000 a year, ending at about a 1.4 million dollar balance in fiscal twenty-nine. It will actually begin getting better after that because the CalPERS costs start leveling off in the early 2030s and start declining in the later 2030s. And so that is going to give you fiscal capacity further out. Now, the issue is with the retirement tax. This chart on top assumes the current methodology for computing the retirement tax. We have recommended last year and do continue to recommend that you get a compliance review on that, just validate those calculations. Other cities have found that upon doing the review, that there are a portion of unfunded liability and, in this case, city pickup costs that would be ineligible. And if they were ineligible, then the forecast, we restated it below just to show that the result is a steeper decline, where you'd actually be in deficit by fiscal twenty-eight. That would be about a 380,000 average shortfall. So when it comes to looking at the strategies, we feel the range is really that you would be looking at 150,000 to 380,000 a year in potential strategies that could either increase revenues or decrease expenses by that amount. So at this point, I'm going to turn it back to Andy, who's going to quickly, Andy and Rick are going to give you a quick overview on those strategies.
Okay, thanks, Bob. We have about three slides left and then we can answer any questions that you have. But you may recall that we developed a little over a dozen different budget strategies for your consideration. And we ranked those strategies sort of on a matrix of how much of a fiscal impact they would have relative to how difficult they would be to actually implement. And the implementation difficulty factors are on the far-left-hand side of this slide. And then the potential fiscal impact, which obviously the more money, the more interesting the strategies are. And the color coding in terms of the the assessed difficulty of implementation. Obviously, you all things being equal, you'd want to go for those things that are in the bright green, minimal difficulty, high potential of success and big fiscal positive impact. And you're going to stay away from anything that is in the bright red, where you're going to go through significant pain, just to have a low potential of success and low fiscal payoff. Next slide. So I'm going to ask Rick to sort of update you on the strategies. You've made progress on some of the strategies and that's really good news. So, Rick?
Thank you, Andy. The strategies that we came up with were thirteen in general. And what we tried to do, as we do with other engagements, is try to identify them in four specific categories. We try to look for budget strategies dealing with expenditure controls, shifting costs away from the general fund to other funds. And then also service delivery changes. If there's any ways that the service can be changed from doing it in-house to possibly contracting out or working with some type of joint powers, authorities. And then the next one would be service enhancements. What opportunities does the city of Cloverdale have to enhance their general fund revenues? If we're successful in those three areas, then we don't necessarily have to get to the fourth area, and that is service level reductions. But in our due diligence, we take a look at service level reductions as well, too, and put that forward for your consideration. And so, you know, what you see is on the left-hand side, each one of these specific strategies spelled out in each one of the four general categories. In total, we came up with a little bit over $2.6 million in strategies. Service delivery changes and revenue enhancements were the vast majority of those, followed by the expenditure controls and then finally the service level reductions. Bob, you want to go to the next slide, please? This is a updated strategy slide. Since we came up with the strategy back in the fall of twenty twenty, the city has made some progress in addressing some of these strategies. The first one, as you can see, they're highlighted in yellow to show you what the changes are. And the first one is, the city did incorporate our suggestion for the medical and other benefit reductions. Historically, the city has had more appropriations than they needed for expenditures. And so they reduce their budgets accordingly in that one. The next one was the over-budget categories in contractual services. The city tightened the belt, took a look at your contractual services categories, and staff was able to put forward a budget for council's operation that addressed that. The other one was Measure U, excuse me, Measure R, which was the utility users' tax that was passed by the voters. And so that has been implemented. The other two that we wanted to bring to your attention was if you have, like Bob mentioned, a range of about $150,000 to $300,000 as far as any type of shortfalls in the future, one of the ways might be the path of least resistance would be to take a look at your subsidy that the general fund does to your community development department and possibly do a cost recovery in that department. That could generate upwards of a quarter of a million dollars annually. And then we would be remiss if we didn't bring to your consideration also, you know, the opportunity for joining a regional dispatch or contracting with another public safety department in the area that provides dispatch. If you were to do that and outsource your dispatching services, you could come up with savings of close to a million dollars annually. That would lend itself to expanding other services that the city could provide to the community or addressing any type of future budget issues. So questions from council on that? I want to be sensitive to your time, that's why we're doing the summary presentation this evening.
Counsel, any questions? Staff, any questions at this time? I'm scrolling through here, so I think I saw Melanie's hand go up, I saw Gus's hand go up. So Melanie, why don't you go first? Gus, you go next.
Oh, sure. Well, since we're looking to a crystal ball, I'll just kind of ask the current events question. You know, in regards to the structural deficits that you've highlighted here, I mean, you really you really, thanks for ending on a positive note, I guess I'll start with that. Thanks for showing, you know, what we can do and what we have done and the progress that we're making. But, you know, the structural deficits this community faces are great concern. So I'm just going to kind of ask you what your general thoughts are on the there isn't a cute nickname for it yet that I've seen, but Biden's infrastructure plan, where it would be, you know, investment in the trillions in local government and infrastructure. And, you know, how you think that we can, maybe let me rephrase the question is, you know, how can we really use the COVID rescue dollars to address these structural deficits? And then kind of maybe give a longer-range view on, it certainly isn't a done deal yet, but how, you know, we could, our community could take care, take advantage of infrastructure by the Biden infrastructure plan to take care of so many of these structural issues that we do have? What your thoughts would be on that?
Sure. So there's sort of three questions there about the structural deficit, the COVID relief monies that we know are coming, and then the infrastructure dollars. So in terms of the structural deficit, I would characterize your structural deficit as relatively minor. Cloverdale is in good shape. At least, I would say, 85% of the cities in California have some sort of a structural deficit, mainly it relates back to the pension costs. So you're in better shape than most and you have a number of strategies you can use to close that. As to the COVID relief that you'll be getting, we know that the city will be getting that money. The the utilization of those dollars is really going to be pretty flexible. So you'll be able to use it for, first of all, you'll be able to use it to close any gaps in your revenues that have occurred. So you can rebuild your reserves, you can use it that way, you can use it to benefit your general fund. That's going to be up to the council. You can also use it to benefit local business. You can use it to benefit nonprofits. You can use it for capital investments in water, sewer, or broadband. There's a number of ways that you can use this money. The only thing, the big caution is, it is one-time money. So to the extent you put it into operating programs where there being expectation that you'll keep delivering that service, that could be trouble for you after the relief expires in twenty twenty-four. With respect to the infrastructure, we don't know exactly what that's going to look like, but if the Relief Act is any indication, that one, the thing about the the Biden administration where they seem to be going is they seem to be looking at capital in an extremely broad range of investment. So it's not just transportation, it's sort of across the board. There are, one thing I should say about the Recovery Act is in addition to those relief monies for cities, there are at least four other programs in there where there'd be grant funding opportunities that are directly applicable to cities for capital work. for home, for housing assistance, for COVID relief, public health and, and food assistance. And for help with your community organizations and nonprofits that have been hit. So it's really a broad approach. They're talking about infrastructure ranging anywhere from one and a half trillion to four trillion. And we'll have to see what comes out of that, what gets passed and signed. But there's federal stimulus coming unlike anything we've seen since the late 1970s, early 1980s.
That cover your questions, okay? Councilmember Bagby? Excellent. Councilmember Walter?
Councilmember Bagby took all of my questions.
That's why I make you guys alternate. You guys take each other's thunder.
Thank you. Just a, just a general statement, you know, as I look at the revenue, I see very little categories that we have direct control over. We're looking at property taxes. We're looking at sales tax. We're looking at T O T. Now those last two, we could possibly fill with the covert money, with the stimulus money because we did suffer a loss in those categories. But when we say, for example, vacancy savings of 2%, yet our overtime is increasing more than 2%. Vacancy savings equates to overtime. So, you know, they should almost be paired together. And, and you know, as I look at the cuts that you've recommended or the, the strategies for reducing expenses, you know, these are hard ones to get, you know, to consider joining a regional dispatch organization for police. I mean, you, you know, we have to decide as, as a council, what type of community do we want? You know, I mean, do we want to have a Mayberry for a lack of a better word, or do we want to just become more corporate and more business? I mean, I, I don't know. It's a tough situation for me, you know, when we look at, you know, cutting maybe some of the benefits for our employees, you know, I don't think that's what we're about. But by the same token, I realize we have to cut somewhere. So, you know, there's a lot to digest here and I think we have to chew on it and, and, and come up with something. So I, I ramble enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Walter. Any other questions or comments? Only question I had, could we go back to the cannabis tax revenue slide real quick? Thank you. So I'm, that's okay. I'm looking.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. There we go.
There you are. So, so I'm looking here and, you know, one of the things you had brought up is we were, you know, pretty substantially over the target. Was it a real conservative target? Have people really just enjoyed their cannabis this last year? What is this telling me without telling me?
Cannabis revenues are generally up statewide. You can make whatever observation on that you want, but they have tended to be pretty bulletproof in terms of the recession. So even in the beginning, when sales taxes generally were, were on the decline, cannabis remained pretty strong. Now it's turned out that sales tax, which again, you can see from the chart right above, recovered pretty well and a lot of that is online purchases. And our timing was good in the sense that this recession occurred after the state had already negotiated with Amazon and other out-of-state vendors to get taxability of, of interstate online purchases. And also the Wayfair decision, which increased that still further. So when people were staying at home and ordering online, sales taxes were able to keep up. Now, a lot of brick and mortar buildings on Main Street may have been adversely affected. But online, a lot of tax was still being generated. And now in terms of cannabis, that pretty much is Main Street. People are buying that locally. But it has kept up. And I think given just where we are year to date and the trend, this 400,000 level is, you know, seems quite attainable.
Does it seem like, it looks like the, the, or maybe the the, the better performance of this, of the cannabis tax, is that really? And, and what I'm looking at here is, is the actuals. So that yellow dot, you might be able to help me in how I, I'm potentially reading this wrong, but is it, is it a fair assessment to say the increase in cannabis kind of made up for the, the decrease in sales and use tax to a certain extent? Or is it not really worked that way as far as direct translation goes?
Well, it's, it's about $250,000 improvement. And it's a different scale, but the difference between the budget and the line here is about 250,000. And then up here, the, you're looking, e- each one of these lines, horizontal lines is $250,000 apart.
It's pretty substantially different. I got you there. Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. Jennifer, anything you want to add in about our, our budget projections or anything like that? All right. Thank you. Well, gentlemen, thank you so much for your help this evening and, and giving the presentation and entertaining our Q and A. I, I find myself saying this a lot. I can't expect you guys to always tell us what we want to hear, but it was a nice, complete and transparent presentation and it gives us something to build off of. So I genuinely appreciate your efforts and, and being here with us this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Let's go ahead and get into our next presentation. This is going to be from our Chamber of Commerce. Going to give us an update on activities for fiscal year 2021 and a proposal to install Welcome to Alexander Valley signage on Highway 101.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Joining us tonight from the chamber is Executive Director Nina Hanchett, as well as Savannah Hemphill. The chamber staff is going to provide an update on their activities that they undertook in the current fiscal year 2021, which in large part were funded by our contributions. And was subject to a professional services agreement. It's more detailed in the, in the agenda report. In addition, the chamber is going to provide an overview of a proposed highway signage, recognizing that our location within the Alexander Valley.
Thank you, David. And I want to thank, oh, 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 thank you, Irene. You were, you were on my list. You generously said that you would do the screen sharing for our PowerPoints. And before we get into that, I'd like to thank the council, city staff for scheduling this presentation. And I'd like to introduce the members of the board that are present tonight. Erin Mavis is our board president and I didn't see her picture, but she should be, she's our new board incoming board president. Ron Pavelka, who is also a board member and is handling some special projects for us. Savannah Hemphill, who's the associate director and myself. Nina Hanchett, I'm the executive director, lofty title. It's been a wild ride for Cloverdale and for the globe. And the chamber, as a result, has directed a lot of our resources or redirected a lot of our resources with the goal of supporting our local businesses and the entire community of Cloverdale. We've, we use social media to promote our businesses and the entire community. We, we did videos. And whatever it took to be available to answer questions, whether on cell phone or, or on the phone or via email or on social media. And we also worked hard to get people together to solve problems, even when we were in many cases challenged by being able to get together. Example of that might have been, I'm just thinking, the Fourth of July fireworks where we really didn't want people coming from all over the region to Cloverdale. I can't believe I'm saying this. We didn't want it to be COVID Dale. So we worked with the people involved and came up with a, a positive solution postponing the event. And that happens when, when you love your community and you want it to get better, not not be something that could endanger our community. So we're working on our scope of work for next year. And we believe that the city gets a ton of value for the funding that we receive from the city and we know our businesses. And they know that they can rely on their chamber. It's a trusted resource. So let's recount a few of our accomplishments. They're not all listed and we're going to just kind of bullet them and share them with you and I'm happy to answer any questions. So we continue to work on our relation, work on the relationship that we have with the city, which is I think David refers to it as Team Cloverdale and, and it, that's exactly what it is. We, we are happy to help promote the message of the city, the information that comes from the city. Kind of help with messages that might be in, sort of not received well by the community. For some reason, we're happy to, you know, get involved with that. We, we are, we are the marketing and promotion arm of Cloverdale and we are also in information Cloverdale. We're working together to, to, to kind of put that on steroids or whatever. So one of the really simple things we did and people, they just love it. I got a, I got a call yesterday. A, a, a new, a new homeowner said, I can't believe that you deliver bags and fill them with Cloverdale promotional material and information. It's a very Mayberry thing to do, Gus, using your, using Mayberry. So the bags that we deliver are chamber bags. They have business promotional material. It's absolutely positively free for our businesses to participate. Restaurant menus, menus are included if people, if people send them to us. A letter from the mayor, a letter from the chamber, we send, we put in Experience Cloverdale, a map, dining guides that we constantly upgrade, license plate covers, coasters. And we not only deliver those to new homeowners, but if a property manager lets us know that they have new tenants, we'll do that too happily. So that's just one of the reasons we make people feel loved. So Irene, would you mind going to the next slide? Accomplishments, we, every day we post at least one photo on Experience Cloverdale. We do that on Instagram. We highlight our people, our businesses, the beautiful scenery, our beautiful community events and whatever, whatever kind of pops up, pops it to mind is Cloverdale. Our social media reach includes our chamber website, Facebook and Instagram for both the chamber and Resilient Cloverdale, which we'll talk about in a little bit. And that's how we do it. We do it every day. Irene, I'm ready for the next one. Thanks. One of the first things we did when COVID reared its ugly head here is we let people know what businesses were open and how they were opened. We posted that to social media for people to use as a resource. And we also printed and delivered to every business a, a please mask sign. And you see them all over town. I just went to the gym the other day. He had one up there from when they were open for three or four days. So we also produced masking videos and we highlighted our business, community and city leaders in their masks. Next slide, please. We also produced 45 local videos. They were about two minutes each. Posted to different social media platforms where we, we wanted the community to see what we have here, our unique and wonderful businesses. And we, we did really well in terms of average numbers of views where there were over 800. And that's Adriana and Fatima from the Panaderia. We did a sidewalk sale and the interesting thing about the sidewalk sale, the, the chamber helped promote it. It was, it was an idea that was started a couple of years ago. Our chamber board president, Erin, started it and it was a little different this year because of the fires. The wild, the lightning fires, it was under smoky skies and that kind of thing, but people still turned out and they had bags in their hands and it was great to see people in town on a Saturday. We also, using COVID as a backdrop, we thought about what, how we could mark the calendar with events for our community that would be COVID. It would take COVID into account. We did a parade. When I say we, we did it with other organizations and volunteers, but we sort of were the spearhead of that. Promoted, we did a Halloween parade, which we got rave reviews. A decorating contest and a scavenger hunt for local businesses. So the kids would go and look at local shop windows and count the spiders in the window. And we provided lots of spiders and lots of webs. It was, it was sweet. We had a, we co-produced with the citrus fair, a trunk or treat event on Halloween. There were about 400 cars and lots of families attended. We had more candy than I've ever seen. And they were all, if all the candy was donated by individuals and community organizations, it was amazing. Hosted a few photos. It was amazing. And all of it was gone. So we also, God, we also, we do, we did all of this. We, there was a, when the businesses were, restaurants were relegated to serving people outside and winter was upon us. We put out a, a, a call to the community to raise funds for heaters, for outdoor heaters. So our, they, diners could dine in sort of relative comfort. And there were no heaters anywhere and somehow Savannah managed to find them. Found a warehouse full of them. So we were able to get our restaurants some warmth for their customers. And we continue, we have and we continue to provide one-on-one assistance with county, state and federal access to funding. In fact, I've got an appointment tomorrow to work with one of our restaurants for the California grant, which opens tomorrow and closes Friday. So I'm, I'm happy to do that. People are, you know, they're, they're overwhelmed restaurant. They work hard to keep the doors open and this is just another, another service and another benefit of, of having somebody like us that, that really loves our businesses. We represent Cloverdale Business on the Homeless Advisory Task Force. That's sort of been in hiatus, but it's coming back in April. And we also with the police department hosted Business Watch forums where our businesses could ask questions and of Lieutenant Chris Parker and that he was able to talk to them individually and let them know what's, what's happening, why it's happening, what they can do. If, if people are concerned about, I don't know, transience or graffiti or how do you, you know, what can we do to, to, to be the community and to look like the community we want to look like? We are a COAD, a core partner in the Resilient Cloverdale COAD, which is one of the, one of the things that, that resilient Cloverdale, I, I keep in my mind is that you can't have any kind of economic development if you can't weather a disaster, whether it be a fire, whether it be a flood, whether it be an earthquake. So we are very, we believe that the chamber represents our businesses in knowing that if they decide to put their stake in the ground here, that we will, that we are working to, to make this a a community that can pull together and withstand whatever. So we all, we did a, we actually did a, a video announcing So we all, we did a, we actually did a, a video announcing Resilient Cloverdale. We've done banners and that kind of thing. And there's going to be a lot more information about that to come. But we're sort of a communication central for that. And we're working to make, to hopefully get it on everybody's lips so that people know that the city, the Chamber, other organizations and Citrus Fair and a lot of other local organizations are working too. We are coming to the end of the year and we, rather than do a downtown festival with people, we again used COVID as a, as our guideline and, and did a neighborhood sleigh ride where we, it was, we went through the neighborhoods, handed out candy canes and reindeer food. We had about, I think it was six or seven vehicles that were part of that parade. And again, rave reviews. We did, in order to promote local shopping, we did a holiday hop where people got their candy cane signed off after they made a purchase. And then we did a drawing. And everybody that participated had a gift card or an item in the basket. So that winner got a lot of Cloverdale stuff. And then we also did a holiday decorating contest. And Cloverdale really turns out for holiday decorating, whether it's wet holidays or Halloween or Dia. It was, it was pretty fabulous. And, but that's, that's what we did. Now what we're doing is, is we again, continue to help businesses with finding resources, guiding the reopening of businesses as we move from the red tier into the, I can't remember, is it orange? Well, whatever. We are, starting April 1st, we're working on a shop and support local. Here's why. Basically, the, 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 the whole idea is to, is to know that our business owners and managers are also our neighbors. So there'll be social media, there'll be printed material and advertising about that. And we do have unique and wonderful indie businesses. So we are working on that. We are also working on a small town video where we're highlighting Cloverdale's past and present. And again, emphasizing where you can embrace life in a small town. And as, as things start opening up, we hope we can do some cool events like our car show, downtown trick or treat, which was a ton of fun the first year we did it, and a winter festival where Santa comes to town. And then last but not least, we are, our welcome signs are just about, just about ready for primetime. It's, they'll welcome Cloverdale Sonoma County. One's going to be just south of the hamburger ranch. The other one is on Citrus Fair Drive. And they are, we've got the signs all ready to go and we're working on the installation. And one sort of just aside is that Erin Mavis, who is our Board President, has also offered to do one-on-one social media workshops with our businesses that might have social media and don't know what to do with it or don't have it and want it. And she's pretty fabulous. So we did a video letting our community know that that, that's happening. I know it was, this is a little bit disjointed. I get horribly nervous doing this. But I'm happy to entertain questions. And if I don't have answers, I'll get back to you, like Mark Zuckerberg says.
Well, thank you, Nina. Yeah. No need to be nervous. You always do a fantastic job. And the efforts you guys have made throughout the year really speak for themselves. You can just plop them slides up if you wanted and, and we'll just, you know what I mean? Anyhow, I, I digress. So council members, staff, any, any questions for Nina or any members of the board or Chamber of Commerce at this time on their presentation? Melanie, please.
Great, Nina. I just want to say thank you so much. I mean, I, I don't think we can put a dollar sign on the value that you brought to this community this year. You and Savannah and, and Ron and Erin and everybody who's worked on your team has just done, done an amazing job. And it's just been, it's been an honor to just like show up at these events and do my little bit. And every detail has been taken care of and it's been thought of. And it just means so much to me. I'm like getting teary just like remembering the Halloween and remembering the Christmas light and how much it meant to people. So thank you so much. I mean, I just think it's so valuable. I do have a complaint though, that no one has brought back the Black Bart masking. I think that should have been a marketing component that Ron definitely dropped the ball on. So I'd love to see a Black Bart masking campaign for the remainder of, while we still need to stay masked. So, and then I just wanted to say that as far as, yeah, I love the, can you put the last slide up with the looking forward to what, what's coming up? You know, I just want to make a commitment to you and the Chamber too, that, you know, I mean, I'm going to continue to, you know, push for policies that really support our businesses. And I, I think that it's, it's so important that, I mean, while we're still, you know, while we're still in, in the red and, you know, it's, it's going to be a while to, until, you know, everybody is walking around town and going out to, you know, lunch or dinner, you know, without any concern. It's going to be a while. But it's like right now, we need to be planning for, for our coming out party, essentially, you know? And so I'm looking forward to, you know, to working with you. And I just think that it is so important that, that the, the council through, you know, our land use decisions, make every, every decision we make has to be to bring bodies into downtown for our local businesses. Because I think that the pandemic has shown us and our, you know, we just had our presentation from our financial analysts is that it, shopping local campaigns are fantastic. But there is just no substitute for having bodies on, you know, bodies walk in the streets, having that, that daytime activity and, you know, making sure that there are, you know, local folks who live locally and work locally because you, you shop where you work. And I'm going to make, you know, that my commitment to, to you and the Chamber and our local businesses is that we, that when I'm looking at policy, that that is our goal, is to make sure that we are supporting local business and in the, the structural decisions that, that we're making. So that, that's my commitment to you and to my local businesses who I, I love and I try to, I support as, as much as I can. But the, the, you know, the stay at home order really illustrated that people shop where they work. And, you know, we, we, and when we can, when we have the opportunity to do that, we need to fix that in this community so that we can have a sustainable, healthy local economy where it's a circular economy where we're all supporting each other.
Yay.
Yay.
Thank you, Councilor Begbie. Was there a question in there I missed or more of a comment and kind of a call to action?
Well, where is Black Bart and his mask?
Yeah, that was it. Yeah.
That's a really big, important question. And I'm, I'm charging, I'm charging Special Agent Pavelka with coming up with a, a campaign around that.
Excellent. Thank you. Yeah, we can hear you, Ron.
Okay. Did we want to talk about the sign at all? The?
Yeah, it's, it's coming up.
Okay.
Okay. You'll begin. It's coming up. So, well, let's wait till this council, see if the, any council members have additional questions or comments about the Chamber and then we'll go on to the Alexander Valley AVA sign.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I, I just wanted to say thank you to Nina and Savannah and the board for jumping in during this difficult time. And Nina, I've mentioned to you before, thank you so much for, for being all-inclusive, members and non-members. I mean, it, it's just wonderful that you reached out and you came up with these ideas. Unbelievable. You know, the Halloween event, the Christmas holiday event, the lights, fantastic job. I can't say enough. And, and I'm right behind Melanie. You know, we're, we're going to support you in every way we can, getting our businesses down town. So, thank you.
Thank you, Gus.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Cruz.
Yes, I want to say thank you to the Chamber because you have been very supportive to all the initiatives around Sisso Chavez celebration. And also in terms of promoting every bit of activity that comes here to Cloverdale, either it's business related or not. And that's very important. Thank you. Especially when it, it is assigned to Savannah. All the challenging things, right? Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. And I, I also want to echo my gratitude. You know, typically the, the person I call is Nina, but I know full well that there's an entire board that's, that's supporting her in these endeavors. And the creativity that comes out of that room is, is really awe inspiring in, in the way that you guys work together. Partnering on the, the Christmas lights contest, just an absolute whale of a time. And, and still, still getting feedback about that. Even the odd side eye for the, for the traffic we blocked and, and just really enjoying the evening as a whole. And the, the gift card contest was really well thought out, really well marketed. It was fun to participate in. When, when needs came up, where, where really you just had to kind of reach out to the community and say, you know, we need a little bit of cash flow to help everybody out. You, you made that process easy as well. And, you know, slipping you guys some donations through Venmo was something I took great pride in. And it was very easy to do. And, and so, you know, again, the, the evolvement of your, of your board and, and, and the creativity that you guys have inspired to ensure Cloverdale can weather something like this, I believe is truly indicative of the fact that unless you can correct me right now, we did not lose a restaurant due to COVID-19 here in Cloverdale. And, and, and that's, that's huge for the efforts that you guys made. And I, I just want to say thank you.
Mayor Turner, we actually have two new businesses. Elmalon got their wine and liquor, their wine and beer license on the day of, first day of shelter in place. And, and Wolf House. I'm pretty fabulous.
I think you forgot mics, not mikes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I did.
We also have, we have other new businesses in the last 18 months have come into town from the outpost to the new tanning salon that's going to be opening, the music store moved into town. We, we, we have the new cycle studio that's be opening as soon as they, probably April 1st. And the old yoga spot, we moved, we moved Erica from her little tiny place. You could never see her on this, on the first street. So there is, there is a, a lot going on during COVID. And I think that's, that hats off to everybody involved in, in the, in the community.
Yeah. So it's, it's a monumental effort and, and a fantastic result as such. And so it, it sounds to me like you guys have some details that you want to share with us about the Alexander Valley signage and things of that nature, which we're all ears. But, but again, if, if, if I don't get the chance later as we move through the, as we move through the agenda, thank you to you and everyone who participates with you for these efforts and the, the results speak for themselves. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Turner.
Mayor, members of the council, if I can, just to offer a few words in terms of the, the Chamber's work that they've performed in, in coordination with, with the city. I, as, as Executive Director Henchett reflected in our comments, I really do value the collaborative working relationship that we have with the Chamber. I really think they are a strategic partner. As you know, we don't, we don't have the luxury like many of our other cities do in Sonoma County of having a funded economic development department. But the council's support of a funding agreement with the Chamber enables us to deliver high-quality economic development services to our business community, which, you know, supports our, enables our, a city to continue to support the services that we provide to our community. In addition, I want to particularly acknowledge the work of Nina and Savannah and by support of her board on the Resilient Cloverdale initiative. They've really embraced that effort and done quite a bit of work to promote resiliency and participating, you know, every week in the calls and the discussions about how to promote resiliency for all of our residents as part of the Resilient Cloverdale co-ad. And, and their, their work has, hasn't gotten noticed. And you know, throughout the, the pandemic, been in quite, quite a bit of contact with Nina. You know, every time there's a change or an update, I've been able to rely on Nina to convey that information to our business partners and, and ensure that the business community has the most latest, up-to-date information on some, you know, the impacts of, of COVID and the tier, the tier structure. And, you know, she's, she's been able to communicate that, you know, very quickly and efficiently to our business community. And I think that helped, helped the business community, you know, make their way through this, through this crisis. And I just want to say a special thank you to Nina and her team for, you know, that, that work on both Resilient Cloverdale and through the pandemic and keeping the business community informed on all of the changing impacts that we've, we've, we've all had to endure. So I have a, a special thank you for, for Nina and her work. So thank you.
Thank you, David.
My up?
Yeah. Yes. If you want to do an intro, Ron, that'd be great.
I can. Well, my first intro is I, I want to, I want Irene's background. I love that Red Rock. That looks like Red Rocks in Colorado. I want that for the background at my place. This is a real quick, real quick presentation. As you've driven around the county, you've probably seen out in Geyserville on a, on 128 and then just outside of town, you've seen on Crocker Road, there's a sign that's the Alexander Valley AVA sign, Welcome to Alexander Valley. And the AVA approached the Chamber, myself, about a year ago and wanted to replace the sign on Crocker Road. And we, we worked with them, the Chamber, we worked, worked with the AVA to, and with the county. The county gave us a budget and produced two signs. The, the first sign went up, as I said, on Crocker Road. And the second sign was planned to go on 101. And we worked with Caltrans extensively and got down to the point where we were going to look at doing all the paperwork to install the sign. And Caltrans informed us that we cannot put a sign on the highway, a gateway sign, that's not associated with the city that you're entering. That's their rules. We, those of you that have dealt with Caltrans know that a simple task is a multi-year task. We probably have a better chance of meeting with the Pope than we do getting something accomplished with Caltrans. But we were really close and they, they said, no, we can't do that based on the way the sign looked at that time. There is, if you go to the next slide, I think, no, actually the.
Next one after that.
This, the location that we worked with Caltrans on, if you can see the, the larger one on the left, that's, that's the, the north exit. So when you're coming into Cloverdale from the north, any guests, any tourists coming down, down into the, the city, right there where the, and you look on the right, the right image, right there where the off ramp is, where the on ramp comes on from north, the highway, there's a spot right there that is absolutely perfect to place that. It'll say, Welcome to Alexander Valley. So what we have proposed or will be proposing to Caltrans, if you go to the next slide, we'll be taking the existing sign that's already, it's already done. It's, it's bought and paid for. The county has put the money up for it. We're going to propose to Caltrans that we put this sign at the north end of town. This is the same sign, again, if you go on Crocker Road, just as you pass Asti Road, not about halfway down before it becomes River Road, you'll see the sign that says, Welcome to Alexander Valley. And it says, World Class Wines and Vineyards. We've taken that off and we're going to put the name Cloverdale on there. And hopefully, hopefully we can get approvals from Caltrans and get that up at the north end of the community. So people coming into, into Cloverdale will know we're part of wine country, we're part of Alexander Valley, and of course we are Cloverdale. And this will, we obviously have a sign at the south end of 101 coming into town that announces everything that we have. We don't see that, we don't believe we're going to be able to accomplish that. And we do have this sign already to be put up if we can convince Caltrans that we want to do this or if they'll approve it. That's it. Todd recognizes this sign because he put up, Todd installed the one on Crocker for us.
And this is not in the city limits, right, Ron?
It's not in the city limits. No. It's just, it's just outside the city limits by a few hundred feet. And, and even if it was in the city limits, Caltrans does control all signage within, I believe it's 600 feet of, of the highway on, on any sign off the highway, off, off the Caltrans run highway. I believe that was, I'd have to go back and look, but I think that's, so it's, it's all Caltrans. We, we just have to beg, borrow. So it's all Caltrans. We, we just have to beg, borrow and steal from them to get this put up.
Thanks, Ron. Any questions from council or city staff for Ron or the Chamber of Commerce on the Alexander Valley sign? I'm scrolling, so if I miss you, feel free to... And Erin, is there anything you wanted to add as the incoming board president? We're happy to hear from you and happy to kind of be introduced and everything as needed.
Hi there.
Oh, yeah, we can hear you. Oh, no, now you muted yourself again, sorry. There you go.
Okay, perfect. I just, thank you so much for including me in this meeting. It's been very interesting hearing everything going on with the city before we started the chamber portion of the meeting. And I'm looking forward to the new year ahead as the President of the Board of Directors of the Chamber, continuing my work with Nina and Savannah and with Ron and the rest of the board. I'm so proud of everything that we were able to accomplish in 2020 with the help of the city. And it was just really lovely to hear how many of you had praise for Nina and Savannah and all of the hard work that they put in on everything that we were able to do. It's been a really unique experience for me being on the board of the Cloverdale Chamber. I previously had a business in Petaluma and worked there as a board member on the Downtown Association. And just the connection that the chamber has with the city, sort of the chamber here, wearing two hats, working one side for the city to promote the city as a whole and to throw events that are for the city of Cloverdale and not just to promote the businesses, has been just a great way to sort of unite the whole community. And it's been just a wonderful experience to experience Cloverdale. So thanks to all of you on the City Council for that and thanks again to Nina and Savannah.
Excellent. And one, one last question. Are you continuing the student? For lack of a better, it might have the same title, but do you have a student liaison to your board still as well?
We do not right at the moment, but we will when next, with this beginning of the next school year.
Because I...
Oh, sorry. The Cloverdale High felt that the students were doing enough Zooms and that throwing in another chamber board meeting Zoom wasn't really something they needed to be doing during this COVID shutdown. But we're looking forward to having our student liaisons back in the very near future.
Fair enough. All right, council, city staff, student liaison Jennifer, any final questions or comments that you'd like to add before we allow these folks to carry on with their evening? Seeing none, again, thank you all so much for the presentation and being here with us and answering questions. We really appreciate the partnership and collaboration and look forward to what next year can hold.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Turner and the rest of the council and staff.
Thank you, everybody. Good night.
Good night.
So I think this is a natural occurrence for us to go ahead and do a quick recess. We'll do seven minutes. Let's reconvene at 7:41, please. Thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and call this meeting back to order. And move into our consent calendar. All items under consent calendar will be considered together by one action of the council unless any council member or member of the public requests that an item be removed and considered separately. Not as a request to remove an item, but just as a quick update, there is an item on our consent calendar number 11, which is the employment agreement with our city manager, David Kelly. And the consent item on the calendar is to extend his current contract for a period of three months to June 30th. So with that being said, does any council have an item on the consent calendar they wish to be pulled and considered separately? Seeing none, Irene, are there any hands raised? Oh, Todd, please, sorry about that.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Can you get to the raise hand button fast enough for you there? I'd like to pull number seven.
Whoop, I lost my freaking headphone here. Hold on. Let's see here, number seven, which is approval, a final map for 639 South Cloverdale Boulevard and authorizing the city manager or his designated transmit final map to the county clerk recorder for the county of Sonoma for filing. Please consider that item separately at this time. We will address that one individually. Any other items from council? Seeing none, Irene, have any hands got up from the public who may wish to consider an item separately?
Yes, I do have one hand raised from Supervisor McLean.
All right, please.
Hi, everybody. I just wanted to thank the city for the partnership with the Spring Planter Project, which is part of the consent agenda, and say that I am really excited to see the planters around town and I'm, and I'm with the city. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Beth. Appreciate it. Oh, sorry. And one other quick comment that the city attorney alerted me to. Thank you, Jose. Good looking out. Teamwork makes the dream work is the three months is to consider and negotiate a longer term extension. So there will be more action taken with the future with our city manager. Thanks again, Jose. All right, so we have item seven to be considered separately. Can I hear a motion for the remainder of the consent calendar, please?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion for six, eight, nine, and 10.
I second.
And we need 11 to be in there as well, Todd. Is that part of your motion?
And 11.
Okay. And I think we heard a second from Vice Mayor Cruz. Jose, does that cover our basis okay?
And just for the record, the second does agree with adding the additional item. Correct, Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you. Irene, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Land?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
And Mayor Walter, excuse me, Mayor Turner?
Aye. All right, item number seven was asked to be considered separately by Councilmember Lands. Again, resolution approving the final map for 639 South Cloverdale Boulevard and authorizing the city manager or his designated transmit the final map to the county clerk recorder of the county of Sonoma for filing. Councilmember Lands, are there any particular questions or concerns that you wanted to address on this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The answer is no. I just want to make a quick comment that I have shown opposition to this from the beginning. I want to continue. So I figured the vote should be separate.
Now, are you, because I had asked City Manager Kelly if this pertained to the Ledson property before this meeting began. Are you, are you comparing this to that? Because I found this is not the same property.
Yes, which property is this if that is not it?
So, Mr. Kelly, would you be so kind as to give us an overview as to 632 South Cloverdale Boulevard?
This is 639.
639, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. The item before you tonight is a minor subdivision to create four, four lots with the current, the current address is 639 South Cloverdale Boulevard. I think it's the property that's immediately north and adjacent to the Ledson property. The property owner is, has filed a final map with the city to enable the recordation of the map so that it would technically create the four, the four lots. What we're asking for council's approval tonight is not technically, because it's a minor subdivision, council doesn't have to approve the map, but does have to approve the dedication of the easements and right of way that would be required to support the public infrastructure to those four lots. And this, this project did go to planning commission and was recommended for approval. If there's any other additional details about the project, I want to turn it over to our community developer director, Kevin Thompson, to provide the details. But, but it, the project is not the same as the Ledson multifamily development project.
Thank you. Councilmember Lands, does that offer any clarity? Are there any follow-up questions you might have at this time?
It definitely does. I wish there was a map in there and I apologize for being wrong on which property it is. With that, I'll move to approve number seven myself.
Thank you, Councilmember Lands. Do I hear a second?
I'll second, Mr. Mayor.
And real quick, before I move forward, Irene, do I need to open this for public comment? It has been separated from the herd, so to speak.
Yes, please.
All right. Any hands raised, Irene?
No hands are raised, Mayor.
Thank you. With that, we have a motion from Councilmember Lands and a second from Councilmember Walter. Irene, if you'd be so kind for a roll call, please.
Councilmember Land?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
And Mayor Turner?
Aye. Thank you, Irene. So we are going to move on now to communications. We do have one letter that was submitted prior to our previous meeting. We brought it back again. It is communications from a Mr. Tony or Anthony Geraldi regarding fireworks. Everybody have a chance to review the communication? Okay. Any comments or questions at this time?
I did have a chance, Mr. Mayor, and I recommend that we agendize this matter for a later meeting.
Do I hear any support for agendizing this moving forward?
I do. I support that we agendize this and bring it back.
Okay. So David, why don't we go ahead and look at what options are before us and we'll look at bringing this back for a future agenda item for the council?
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Moving on to item... Yep, please.
On that, is it going to be an action item or a discussion item?
That's a good question.
And if it's an action, what is the action that we're pushing?
I think it did. Go ahead, David, please. Kind of help us sort this out a little bit.
Because I heard from the council to bring it back as a discussion item.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to new business workshop on the 2021 water and sewer rate study update. Before I let David kind of take this over and give an introduction, I just want to give him a quick gratitude for a call that he held with a member of our community on Monday with the, the consultant group and really did start to get an idea for how we can really put together a value-added impactful public forum to address these items. And I'd just like to thank David, Mark, and the other associates involved for putting that together and offering that to a member of the community. And tonight, we are going to get an update on different aspects of the water rates and different recommendations based on the feedback that was given at the last council meeting and the, the letter writing that occurred as a result of the last recommendation that went out before the public. We're not taking any action tonight. This is an opportunity to hear an update because we do still need to have a public meeting. But this is an opportunity for the council to offer guidance to city staff and the consultant together as to how that can be conducted and things that we want to ensure are brought up, discussed, and made very clear. So with that, David, I'll go ahead and put myself on mute, turn this over to you, and thank you for leaving the presentation.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, for that introduction. And joining, joining me tonight is Mark Hildebrand, our rate study consultant. In addition, our city engineer, Mark Frankone, is also going to be a participant in the presentation, provide an update, an overview of some of the capital improvement projects. I do just want to take a moment just to provide kind of a little bit of background from how we got here tonight. And starting by just an overview of what the water and wastewater rate study covers. So the city operates two utilities. And, you know, it's kind of evident in terms of the terminology that we're using. It's both a water utility, which is responsible for not only pumping and distribution, but also treatment and delivery of potable water to our customers and residents within the city of Cloverdale. And I do want to make just an important comment upfront. We're, we're one of very few cities in Sonoma County that is responsible for maintaining and operating a water treatment facility. Most cities are retailers and they purchase water, the wholesaler, which is Sonoma Water. We're somewhat unique in the sense that we operate our, our own water treatment plant. So with that said, we also operate a wastewater treatment facility that provides both collection and treatment and release of our water systems. These are both independent utilities and are treated as independent businesses within our city's financial system. The city works hard to maintain these systems, both physically but also financially. And the rate study is a key aspect of ensuring that we maintain the long-term financial viability of both of these enterprises. And it is a typical practice that we bring forward a rate study that involves both, both of the utilities at the same time. It's a, it's a, it's a best practice. It's not required, but it is a best practice to bring those two together because our utility billing does combine the bills and therefore it offers us to look at the rate study comprehensively. In, in February of 2016, the council did accept a previous rate study that adopted rate increases that were in effect in July 2017, July 2018, and July of 2019. Since that time, we have not had any additional rate increases. So we've went, you know, just short of a year, well, you know, since July of 2019. So well over a year since we've had a rating increase, but over the past fiscal year, there has not been one. In 2020, we engaged with Hildebrand Consulting to develop and update the water and rate, water rate and financial plan that would build upon the rate study that was previously completed in 2016. Hildebrand prepared the rate study to update the multi-year rate model and to perform a cost of service analysis that will, which is to ensure that we're, we're able to cover the possible operation of our enterprises. The process culminated in a public hearing that was held in November 2020. And at that time, there was considerable public feedback that the proposed rate structures were considered somewhat impactful. And the direction at the time was to just continue that process and revisit the rates. But during that process, council did make a number of key decisions. At the time, we did review a number of very important capital improvement projects and the council did, with, with city staff's help, adjust timing of some of those capital projects to coincide with the adoption budget and also to address how we were going to fund those through the rate. In addition, Hildebrand Consulting did an analysis of our payment structure and looked at whether to employ a pay-as-you-go strategy for some of our capital improvements or consider a debt issuance strategy whereby you finance public improvements, our infrastructure improvements through issuance of such financial instruments as bonds. And the council pretty overwhelmingly supported the pay-as-you-go strategy over the debt strategy and therefore that was eliminated from further consideration. Again, we provided direction to the staff to adopt the new rates. We did release a key notice and we were on the heels of, of holding a public hearing in November when the process was ceased. The direction at the time was to go back and look at additional, additional alternatives and evaluate how we might bring forward alternative scenarios that relieves some of the proposed rating increases. So what we've done is subsequently worked with Hildebrand Consulting and our city team to look at alternative scenarios. And as part of that process, we did a fairly deep dive on our capital improvement program. We did, you know, during this intermittent period between November, when we held the public hearing, in the current timeframe, we brought forward a presentation on the capital improvement program so that council has a benefit of a comprehensive overview of the CIP and its projects. And since that time, council has decided to refer that subcommittee for further review and input. But likewise, staff has continued to look at and evaluate. But likewise, staff has continued to look at and evaluate this project. One of the key bribers of the proposed rate increases that were presented initially in 2020 were capital improvement projects. So one of the key strategies that was employed in terms of developing alternative scenarios was really looking at deferral of the capital improvement projects. And when it's a deferral, it was really the timing of the project delivery. And so what we're going to present tonight, and I'm going to turn it over here to Mark Hildebrand to walk you through, you know, we're going to really start from the beginning, as we did previously, with some of the underlying foundational work that was performed to bring the rate study forward and talk about how we develop these alternative scenarios for council consideration. What we're seeking tonight is really your input on these alternate scenarios. Ultimately, we promised that we would hold a community workshop. Tonight's really a public workshop for council to kind of roll through and dive in on the analysis and the scenarios that we perform, but ultimately to go back out to the community and garner their input on these proposed scenarios. So with that said, I'd like to turn it over to our consultant, Mark Hildebrand. And Mark Hildebrand is going to walk you through an overview of the updated scenarios and really start from the beginning with this slide. So Mark, if I can turn it over to you.
Great. Thank you. Will I be sharing my screen or will you be running through the presentation on your end?
Mark, you have full control. If you come across any issues, then of course I can pop it up and assist.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't realize that. I should have thought ahead. Thank you for having me again this evening. Appreciate the opportunity to present this important information again. And apologies as I take a moment to open the presentation. Should just take a second. All right. Here we go. Can you see that? Okay?
We can see it.
Great. Okay. So the agenda that I have here today, this doesn't carry a lot of the information that I presented in previous presentations that got into a lot of the minutia of the financial assumptions and all the numbers that went into it. Because we, as Mr. Kelly pointed out, we went through several meetings last year and presented a lot of that information. And ultimately, what we're presenting here tonight are mostly focused on the changes that we've made in reaction to council's request that we go back and take a harder look at, namely, the capital spending, see if we can somehow make some adjustments to reduce the proposed rate increases in recognition of the financial hardships that a lot of folks are experiencing now and in general, just keeping the rates low. So I will cover a little bit of background on the project and touch on the rate setting process and legal requirements. But mostly, I'd like to just focus on these revised financial plans for both the water and the wastewater and go over the rate once again, the rates. So again, I'll go through this a little bit quickly because Mr. Kelly already covered some of these points in his introduction. So we did do a complete, a comprehensive rate study in 2020 for both water and wastewater, where we had a, and we culminated in the proposed public hearing to adopt those rates back in November. But in response to a strong public response, we withdrew the proposed rates at that time and didn't go through that public hearing. And so what we're proposing or what we're presenting here today are the new scenarios that we've developed in recognition of those concerns. A couple of points really important to understand for context as we go through these numbers and these revised numbers, that Cloverdale has the lowest combined water and sewer utility rates in the region, as I've pointed out in the past in a survey. And you continue to hold a pretty significant backlog of deferred capital spending. If you look at your capital spending over the last few years, it's essentially zero, which is never a good sign for utility. You should always be reinvesting. Your system is always aging. Usually, the rule of thumb is that you look at your depreciation expense, which is really a measure of how quickly your assets are aging and how quickly you're losing value in your system. And you should be putting that much money right back into the system by replacing old pipes and whatnot. So the city really has been deferring some capital spending. And as a result, you've been able to keep your rates low. And there's been minimal rate increases over the last three years. It's just been 3%, which is essentially inflation. So you've been keeping up with inflation, which is good. That's better than no rate increases. But it is still keeping your rates at the low end of the region. There were no rate increases at all last year because, as I pointed out earlier, the public hearing was called off. And so now, as we look at these rates, while we are looking at lower rates, I do need to point out that the fact that we deferred rates in 2020 only makes the financial situation that much more difficult for both the utilities because that was a year of rate increases that we missed out on. So the revised proposed rates are going to be based on a deeper cut into the capital spending. And when I say deeper cut, we can't eliminate projects. Projects need to be done. They've been identified for a reason, so all we can do is defer them. And some of them are critical. Others, we've identified as the least critical. We've been able to defer, but some just simply cannot be deferred, as you'll see in the scenarios that we show. But we are going to still need to raise rates. I mean, we can defer as much as we can. But ultimately, the rates are going to need to get to a point where they can pay for the annual capital reinvestment that's going to have to happen every year. And Mr. Kelly's done a great job of coming in and Mr. Rincon in identifying the fact that a lot of these projects have been deferred and that you need to, what I'd like to express as, get to a new normal in terms of annual capital spending. And whether you get your rates up to the point where it can support that right away or whether you spread it over 10 years, ultimately, the rates are going to need to get there, to get to that point to be able to support that spending. So what we're looking at are a couple of different scenarios. But what you'll notice is that at the end of 10 years, the rates all end up in the same place because ultimately, you need to be able to afford to spend that kind of money. So here's a reminder of the survey that I conducted. And it shows City of Cloverdale with your current rates there at the bottom in the region for your combined water and wastewater bill for a single-family home. The rate setting process involves financial planning and, you know, whichever requirements is essentially a financial plan where we're looking at all the money coming in and all the money going out. That's really what today's focus of the presentation will be. We also spent quite a bit of time looking at cost of service and rate design, which is the minutia of how the rates are formed. But we're not going to touch on those points this evening because we're really back at step one, which is how much can we raise rates over the long term? And how much of a capital plan can we afford to implement? Again, everything that we're recommending complies with the law. And the law says that you cannot charge more than the cost of providing service. So this gets into some of the details of how rates are structured. But this also, just in general, water utilities and wastewater utilities in California cannot make a profit. You cannot charge customers more than the cost of providing the service. You can't charge them a little extra and transfer it to the general fund because you need to change light bulbs in City Hall. That's against the law. And everything that we've done here complies with that. So if at any point there's question about whether the rates are being raised too much because it exceeds what the capital program will be because maybe the cost estimates were too high or because projects don't get delivered. In that situation, if you raise rates to a certain point, but you don't spend the money, the money stays in the utility until you find a way to spend it. Or if the money starts to accumulate, then at that point in time, you can decide to dial back any additional rate increases until you've caught up and you've spent the money down. But it's just, it's very important for everyone to understand that any rate increases that are being proposed will be used solely for these utilities and not for any other purpose. So our objectives here were to make sure that the rates were legally defensible and that we meet all the financial obligations of both the utilities. The rate designs were also designed to be simple. But again, we're not going over the rate design this evening, so we won't be covering that. So let's jump into the water enterprise financial plan. Here's a snapshot of your revenues. It's about $3.3 million in rate revenue. That's the revenue that you receive from your customers for a total of about $3.6 million per year. Your operating expenses are a little bit less than that. They're $3.3 million. So what you don't see in this picture is the capital spending. So essentially, your rates are enough to cover your operating expenses and your debt, but no additional capital spending. And so that's really, the rate increases are really looking to address that need to be able to fund the capital spending. At this point, I'd like to pause for a second and hand it over to Mr. Rincon to talk a little bit about the projects that have been identified for the water capital plan.
Yeah, okay. So looking at this, as this picture, it's a general guideline. A lot of our facilities are aged. The chlorine content tank has been put in in the early 80s. It's never been emptied. We need to get to it to do some maintenance on the interior. And it's vulnerable. It's a key part of transferring water out of the water plant and into distribution is to leave it in this tank to get the contact time necessary for chlorine to disinfect. And so by having just one facility, we're highly vulnerable because, like I said, this facility has never been put out of service so we can get in there and do the proper maintenance that it needs. So it's been over, let's say, 82. So we're talking, you know, going on 40 years now. And that's just not a feasible way to run the plant. Likewise, there, Cherry Creek Reservoir, that's, you can see, is an old facility. It was put into service, I believe, in the early 70s. And it's seismically not suitable anymore. It doesn't have slosh space or space above to handle seismic events. It's leaking. It's just dilapidated. And so we need to replace this reservoir. It's served its useful life and it's time for it to be replaced. The Ritter Tank, you know, that's a, you can see, it's a riveted, bolt-together steel tank. It's put together with plates and bolts. And that's, you know, it's a more, it's a younger reservoir. But you don't get as many years out of a bolted tank as you would as a welded steel tank. So even though this tank was put in much later, it's already aged faster than, let's say, the Cherry Creek Reservoir. So ergo, you know, the decision was made early on to use this because it's more economical. But again, you get a shorter life out of it. So that's why we're addressing that one as well. And then the tribute plan itself just needs to, we spent money on a treatment train. We've got started looking at the transfer pumps. The transfer pumps are a certain age. And mechanical systems, you know, 20, 25 years of service is about it. And now these things are going on 30, 35 years. So we need to take a serious look at it. So we lose one pump, we're in bad shape. So these are highly risk, operationally risky items to just kind of, you know, continue to run without, you know, anticipated failure. You can go on to the next slide, Mark.
Yeah.
So this is an overview of the capital budget. And I know we put into some scenarios, kind of like spreading as much as we can to bring the costs, kind of spread it out a little bit more. And, you know, this is our attempt at spreading those out. So Mark, if you want to kind of lead us through the scenarios.
Yeah, yeah, I will. So you may recognize this scenario. This is actually what was presented back in November. So this is the original capital spending scenario. And I'm going to show you two more scenarios that we developed, that staff developed. And it will highlight which projects are being deferred and by how many years. Two things that are important to note here in the last two columns, you'll see they are labeled by priority. And almost all of these are necessary or important. And anything that's that's being done to serve development is going to be paid for through impact fees. So you can see there is a source capacity project and a new well. Both of them can be 100% paid for with impact fees. There's also, we've also identified, and you'll see the same percentages in the following slides. We've identified as much as possible to pay for with impact fees. Ultimately, we're limited by how many impact fees are in the fund right now and how quickly growth happens. So in the scenarios that we'll be presenting, we actually exhaust all of your impact fees. So we've leveraged them as much as possible. So here's a graphical representation of that same table, which just shows, again, highlights how little capital spending occurred between 2017 and 2022. And the reason that you're able to have the rates that you have is simply because you haven't been doing any capital. That's just not sustainable. And this scenario, I'll spend a little bit of time explaining this graph. We'll see several iterations of the same graph. At the top, what you see, the bars represent your expenses. So it's a combination of your operating expenses, your debt service. And the top light blue represents your capital spending. And in the background, represent, and the green represents your revenue. So the bottom green represents miscellaneous revenue, including the impact fees. The middle green represents your existing rate revenue with your existing rates. And the dark green at the top represents the additional revenue that you'll get from the rate increases. And the rate increases are listed at the bottom there. And one last thing to point out, in the middle, those two lines, the blue line represents your reserve targets. And the red line represents your actual reserves projected over time. So you can see that currently, your reserves are above your target levels. And they'll climb a little bit as you continue to defer capital spending. But as soon as that capital spending hits, starting in 2024, those reserves are going to get drawn down heavily. And you really need these rate increases to prevent the fund from going negative. So this was intended to show you what was proposed back in November. If you have a better memory than I do, then you'll notice that some of those percentages are different. The reason that they're different is because we didn't adopt the rates. And as I pointed out, if these rates were now to be adopted on July 1st, so six months later, that's six months of rate increases that you didn't have in place until we have to make up for lost time. So we actually had to bump these rate increases up a little bit more to be able to afford that same capital program because of the deferred action on the rate increases. So here's scenario two, and I've done, we've done our best to highlight, and it looks like it got a little shifted there. So we've done it with the highlight how these different costs have changed. So there's an arrow to the right and a highlighted number to show when a project got deferred by a year. And the arrow is pointing down when the total has been reduced. And so you can see there's a series of projects here that got deferred. Specifically, out in 26, 27, there's a series of projects that got pushed out into what we're calling the Year Seven and Beyond. So that grouping of projects is about $10.3 million. And those projects are assumed to be, are assumed to be spent over the course of five years. So those costs are, that 10.3 is divided by five. And so that's the annual capital spending for Year Seven and Beyond would be about $2 million. So with these deferrals, the graph changes to this picture here. So you can, at your leisure, you can kind of toggle back and forth between this graph and the previous one. But ultimately, this is the picture that it gives us from a rate-setting perspective. So you can see that it's a similar picture where the reserves remain healthy for a while until that capital spending, at this point, it really spikes in 2026. It's been pushed out a year. And then you can see the reserves really dropping significantly. And you really need all of those rate increases to be able to stay in the red. To be able to stay in the red, sorry, in the black. So you can see that the rate increases did drop. And what you'll notice about the scenarios that we're presenting is that we really made an effort to specifically lower the rate for July first. So the the rate increases that we're proposing are, you know, the first one will be on July first. And we do recognize that this is not a good time to be asking the community for, to pay more for their utilities because of COVID and all the impacts. And we are aware of that. So one thing we made a very strong effort was to create scenarios where we really minimize the rate increases that would happen in the immediate future. So you see it would be a ten percent rate increase, followed by a three fourteen percent increases, and then a ten percent rate increase. So the cumulative rate increase over five years would be seventy nine percent if you account for compounding. And that's compared to eighty four percent, which was the cumulative rate increases that were proposed back in November. Then we sharpened our pencil yet a bit more. And you can see that these projects got pushed out a bit further. And but what you'll notice is that the spending in year seven and beyond has gone up. And again, that's because these projects aren't going away. You can push them out into the future, but they need to get done eventually. So yes, the the spending over the next five years has been reduced in this scenario. But you're really just pushing that capital spending out into fiscal year twenty eight and beyond. So here's the that picture on the graph. And here's scenario three. And we, you know, we we recognize that this is probably the scenario that is obviously the scenario that's the most. Acceptable from a rate setting or from a rate adoption standpoint. And you can see that these rate increases are materially lower than what were proposed in November. So this is the product of a lot of. Working back and forth with the engineering department and Mr. Rincon and identifying the most that we can push projects out. So you can see that the rate increases are six percent, followed by four twelve percent rate increases. For a cumulative sixty seven percent over the next five years. As compared to the eighty four percent back in November. So that's a about twenty five percent drop in the rate increases that we are proposing. Rather than pausing for questions, I'll go ahead and go to wastewater because it's it's a similar story. Although on the wastewater side, you'll find that we found even more opportunities to to lower the rates. So on the wastewater wastewater side, it's about two point four million dollars in total revenue and about two million dollars in rate revenue. The expenses, the operating budget is actually more than that, it's two point four. So you can even afford your operating budget with the rates that you have right now, let alone a capital program. For context, it is important to understand that none of the scenarios that we're going to present are trying to to pay for or capture the cost. The a significant advanced water treatment project that's on the horizon. We're not sure when that project's going to be necessary, but it's a regulatory driven project. That's going to require you to increase the level to which you treat your water. It's going to be a significant project. But at this point, you have your hands full just affording all your other capital projects. So we want to acknowledge that it exists and that it's a project that you're going to have to deal with in the future. But hopefully, you'll be able to find grants or find other other ways to address the requirements of the regulators. So I'd like to hand this back over to Mr. Rincon to describe some of your wastewater capital spending.
Yeah, just kind of summarize it, we we don't capture a lot of photographs, unfortunately, for the wastewater, because most of it's hidden, hidden from view. But you can see that there's a lot of activity in videoing and smoke testing of our collection system, just to catch up. Get an idea of what our collection system is looking like. Because if this, if you see smoke coming out of there, some illegal connection and videoing it. Just because you get you get a better idea of what the condition of the pipeline is. And some of our pipelines, especially the downtown area, are are aging and they will need to be replaced. The standard back then was, you know, four inch pipes. And so there's a downtown has a has a number of four inch lengths, four inch diameter pipelines in several several areas that are are undersized for today. So that's why we spend a lot of time in maintaining the sewers by sending our vector truck and jetting jetting these lines constantly to make sure we don't have any overflow. The other thing I wanted to point out here is the SCADA system, you know. There is no SCADA system at the wastewater treatment plant. It's basically just a graphic view of some processes. But it's not, there's no control in this. And and most modern plants now, you're able to control many of the processes remotely. And a lot of it's going to artificial intelligence as well, just to kind of help with the treatment plan. Luckily, this treatment plant is a secondary plant, so there's not a lot of, I would say, you know, advanced needs there. But as we move into an advanced treatment, a SCADA system will be absolutely necessary. The Shanahan Pump Station, that was put back in the sixties. It needs to be replaced. Basically, it's a series of manholes, for lack of a better word, for them in a series to kind of capture the 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 flow coming off the hill there and at the subdevelopment. And that is no way to to kind of store sewage. You're better off doing it in a wet well and putting a proper pump station. So this is kind of a, I I don't know, it's just, it's just worked for the time. But it's time to to bring to modern standards and replace that, including, we did some temporary things, like put emergency jumper in there so we can at least power it when when we lose power. And we seem to be doing that a lot more frequently these days. CCTV, again, that's just the videoing of our of our utility collection system and and just, you know, keep it, keep tabs on where we put our dollars in terms of the future pipeline replacements. So again, we're getting back to scenarios where, you know, I worked with the operators, we took a quick look at at our proposed CIP, and I tried to make adjustments. You know, and there are risks, pushing projects out, there's always risks. But there, these risks can be managed if if we're just a little bit more aggressive about keeping our maintenance up and 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 keeping an eye on things. So, you know, that's ergo, you'll see a little cost increase on things that can extend the life of our capital, of our cap, you know, our pipelines, basically. So we'll do a little bit more lining and and less cap reviewing and reviewing rather than replacing. So that's that's why we will have these different scenarios, because we've taken a careful look at each of the needs at the wastewater collection system. And and of course, the the plant itself. So, Mark, I'm going to leave that up to you to describe the scenarios.
Great, great, thank you. And I did want to make a point about these costs and how they were derived. And maybe, Mr. Rincon, you can back me up. But the the cost estimates that were developed for these projects were provided by a professional engineering firm reputable. And they use standard cost estimating methodologies to come up with this. There's no reason for us to believe that these costs are inflated in any way. And and again, there's, there's also. None of these costs are, you know, what you might consider profit or anything like that to the city. The the city passed through these costs. All these costs are usually in the form of contractors or design engineers. And, yeah, the the city simply provides some supporting staff to manage the project.
You're absolutely correct. Okay, no, you're absolutely correct. There's a cost to project delivery. The construction dollars are only a segment of it. You remember, you got your design cost, you got your environmental cost on certain projects. And you've got, you know, for like the water side, you've got your, your, a lot of planning dollars go into citing tanks and and reservoirs and wells. Because you're citing exterior facilities, so there's costs involved in that.
Are the delivery costs incorporated in the figures we see before us?
Indeed, they are.
Thank you.
So here's a graph representing the cash flow for the capital spending. And again, the the light green at the top represents projects that can be funded or can be paid for with impact fees. And similar to the water utility, we've done everything we've done, we we could to stretch out those impact fee dollars as much as we can. And we've essentially exhausted that fund in each of these scenarios. So here's a. The proposed rate increases from that you was presenting back in November twenty twenty. These rate increases are identical to what were presented. Simply because the the timing of the projects and the fact that there's deferred a bit more on the wastewater side. Didn't require any immediate rate increases to to make up for lost time. But it still remains seventeen percent per year for the next five years, based on that original scenario. So here are some proposed changes to the that table. So you can see that in this case, these, the sewer line replacements are deferred by a year. And the amount, so this is, the sewer line replacement is a series of projects. And so the amount that's going to be spent every year was reduced in the scenario and deferred a bit. The SCADA upgrades was actually accelerated based on what, you know, staff's staff's assessment of what was needed there. And then, in this case, we've eliminated a couple of projects, the G I S mapping and the sewer and pump station. But but this project was going to be development funded anyways. So if that. If that development occurs, then there'll be enough impact fee dollars to pay for that project. And here's a graph showing that capital spending. And then here are the new rates for scenario two. So you can see compared to the seventeen percent per year, we're now down at seven percent per year in the first year, followed by thirteen percent. But we go out into year six with another thirteen percent rate increase instead of dropping to four. Again, we have, we always have to get back up to that same level of annual spending eventually. So whether we raise now or later, that's what these scenarios are going to show you. So the cumulative increase over the next five years will be seventy four percent compared to the hundred and nineteen percent that was shown back in November. And then we sharpen our pencil even more on scenario three here, until you can see that, again, these prices dropped. Some of the slipline projects were, was eliminated. The sewer line replacement and the slipline are are sort of interchangeable. There are two different methodologies of achieving the same goal. And so Mr. Rincon's staff was really looking at how to balance how much of one to do versus the other. The wastewater treatment upgrade costs were were lowered. As were the CCTV project costs and the Shanahan Pump Station costs were were pushed out. Here, so you can see it's significantly less capital spending in the in the media term, and it's pushed out into the future. And so here you can see, again, another significant drop in the proposed rate increases, only three percent on July first of this year, followed by ten percent per year. For several years, and then four percent thereafter. This this scenario actually shows not just deferral of projects, but a reduction in total capital spending. So that's why you see in the long term that we're not raising rates. Even, as I've said a few times, that they all have to, you always have to get back to the same point. In this case, the annual capital spending is being reduced significantly. And so it's a cumulative fifty one percent compared to the hundred and nineteen percent that was shown back in November. So that's the the end of my presentation. I I would like to field any questions that you have on these different scenarios. And in terms of next steps, we did offer to hold a community forum to discuss these things if the council wishes us to proceed with that. We will be coming back on April fourteenth to give you a final recommendation based on feedback that we received tonight and any additional feedback we receive in the future. Mr. Kelly?
Excellent, thank you. Before we open it up to the council, David, is there anything that you wanted to add as a summary before we kind of dive into the questions?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity, just to, I want to capture a few points. And I think they were, they were covered during the presentation, but I I just want to take the opportunity to emphasize a few things. First and foremost, in terms of the cost estimates themselves, those, as council knows, we presented the capital improvement program. The the CIP projects were prepared by by D H D. D H D is a, you know, internationally respected engineering firm that delivers. These types of projects, you know, all over the world, and they they employ, you know, pretty top notch engineers. So we 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 have a, you know, a fairly high level of confidence in the cost estimates from an from an order of magnitude perspective. You know, the the dollars really are, as they're presented, are in today's dollars. So if you defer those projects, you know, out in time. You know, it's very likely, and more often than not, that those those costs can increase over time, just with general inflation, uncertainties and so forth. Imagine you have to contract or do a bit of project, not in today's dollars, but where they're going to cost ten years from now. You start to get, you start to introduce a lot of uncertainty in that process. But the cost estimates that were reflected that are the basis for the study are in today's dollars. So I just want to highlight that. As our city engineer mentioned, there there was a, I think, a comment that was generated during the last review process about. What was called markup. And what I think what that was in reference to is really, there is no markup. It's really about project delivery. It's the city engineer indicated. It's not just the cost of the 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 construction of a project, it's the necessity, the cost of, you know, designing a project. So when you bring forward a a well project, for example. We're going to hire a geomorphologist to do well tests and evaluations. They're ultimately going to have to design the type of typing system, the type of well structure. There's usually going to be almost with with without question, environmental analysis of proposed improvements. You can imagine if we sink a new well, you know, near the Russian River, there's going to be sequel compliance work that's necessary. And then, you know, ultimately, in terms of project delivery, you know, large projects, we're going to have, much like we do with our street projects, we're going to have, you know. Construction managers on the job around, you know, around the clock, monitoring that activity to ensure that it's being performed pursuant to specifications. And then and then, you know, with that is, you know, there is usually some things, you just ensure that, you know, any any. So I just want to cover that on project delivery. Another couple of key points I want to emphasize is, you know, the time horizon for this rate study. In in the past, we've we've often prepared, you know, three year rate studies. And this study looks at a five year time horizon. And so what happens when you start looking at costs over a five year period, the order of magnitude seems larger than when you look at it over a three year period. But there's some important reasons why we're looking at a five year period. I really want to, as we did with the council, to start looking out for the future a little bit more and have a longer time horizon in your financial planning. And I think there's a lot of benefits to having a longer perspective. You're not just doing it year by year, but you're really looking to the future and planning accordingly. So that that longer time horizon, I think, is that, you know, kind of lends some scariness when you start looking at the rates. Because rather than a three year period, you're looking at a five year period. Last but not least, do you want to emphasize the point of incorporating the development impact fees? We really maximize the use of impact fees for projects. We, we, it's, it's, Mark O'Driscoll indicated, we attempted to maximize available impact fees to cover projects that had any potential growth tied to them. A number of these projects, unfortunately, don't need to stay here because it's truly, they're truly maintenance projects. Their operation and maintenance were prohibited under the government's force from spending impact fees on projects that that maintain our safety. So where the, where where there was, where it was feasible, we maximized use of impact fees to pay for anything that might have a growth component to it. Ideally, we put more impact fees to it. But we can only, we can only budget what we what we either have or expect to to receive from future development. And so that that also helps. helps offset some of the some of the rate increases is you know maximizing the available uh impact fees to help uh address any type of uh opportunities to serve you know any kind of growth even if it's to say infill development in downtown if it's uh the city engineer mentioned we we may have four-inch pipes and we want to upgrade to six well that might support uh some some new development in downtown and if if it was if there's opportunity we could put impact fees towards that so um those are a couple of key points I wanted to make and and I think what you'll see in these scenarios is is a very significant reduction in annual spending on capital improvements so in water it it was three million a year um going forward after now we've expended five years of basically zero capital improvements uh to two-point-two million um so that that really that that difference is what drives those different scenarios and likewise with wastewater we were targeting about a little over two million a year in capital spending and we drove that down to uh just below a million in in capital spending and so it really is uh the capital spending that drove the the rate structures and our particular interest uh and is a reflection of of uh with those different scenarios that were were presented tonight so again we're we're seeking counsel to input on these proposed scenarios uh we're we're hoping to get your input and to be able to um go back to uh the community with a with you know a similar presentation and provide an overview uh we we heard last time uh you know some feedback that you know please stop deferring projects um and so you know we we didn't we 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 certainly don't believe it's prudent to come forward with uh deferring all capital improvement projects but even then if we did I think we still need rate increases to be able to just to continue supporting you know normal inflation and normal cost increases that we would experience with those utilities so that um Mayor members of council that that really concludes our presentation and at this point we want to um you know seek your feedback and input on the next steps and for the scenarios that we presented and if there's anything you missed or if there's any constructive feedback that you want to offer we 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 very much welcome your your feedback.
Sure, thank you Irene would you be so kind as to go back to that grid view it just makes it a little easier for me to see who would like to speak and then if anybody has a a slide that they'd like to refer back to of of course we can bring the document back up it just makes it a little easier for me to facilitate this part of the conversation um council members city staff any immediate questions and comments uh for the for Mark or Mark or David or uh you know just kind of anybody for that matter as we discuss rate All right, I have a quick question um Mark SCADA now the way I've heard the program or the um yeah let's call it a program for lack of a better term uh that automates the certain aspects of the water plant what's your opinion on what that would do to our operation costs if we were able to deploy that product?
Well, really it doesn't not much I mean it allows the operators to to remote access in uh and and certain controls are are able to control it so now the the water plant does have a SCADA system what's what's not been distributed is the distribution system so SCADA there's no SCADA at our reservoirs and stuff so that'd be the next logical step for the water side the wastewater site has no SCADA at all absolutely none and to roll out SCADA for that's going to be costly because you're starting from scratch and you're putting in all those sensors at key locations to you know to be able to control let's say the blowers or something like that you you'd have to put in not only the switches and the control but you had to put mechanical switches there to 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 turn valves and whatnot so so you know SCADA gives you more more remote control so the guys can operate more from within a control room rather than running out into into the treatment plant itself and and making certain adjustments.
So no real impact that you can think of right now on decreasing say overtime costs or any of those kind of variable costs that you're you're lassoing with a lot right now?
Not 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 necessarily I mean these plants are operated twenty-four-seven there and by e- even with the state law you know we're required to have operators on hand now as we move into the future maybe these SCADA systems are becoming more sophisticated they were introducing you know better logic into them and who knows I'm not predicting the demise of operators but you know they'll be be able to do more but I hate to predict the future and I'm not good at it you know who would have thought that we would be doing Zoom meetings for indefinitely here?
Sure, that makes sense thanks Mark council member Walter oh was there another comment there thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that just to dispel any ideas that maybe SCADA is going to simply be to allow the operators to sit in an office all day um it also provides a tremendous amount of uh operational data that's going to help you know uh maximize or optimize the the running of the systems uh treatment uh you know the chemical uh all the all the readings that you get throughout your operations are are better understood when you have a SCADA system and it's going through a computer so it's it's not just about the uh reducing the amount of walking around the the uh facility.
Well, well that to me sounds like almost almost what I was talking about where there was kind of indirect savings so if we're more efficient with our chemical use or or things of that nature do you do you identify a potential for indirect savings in that regard?
I'll defer to Mr. Mr. Rinconian.
Yeah, no we 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 would I mean right now you know we're we're doing workarounds not by not having at the uh SCADA system at the wastewater treatment plant but we put in individual components like uh dosing of chlorine as in the out you know as as it's exiting the plant we're able to we've put sensors at the end and in midway along the pipeline just to get an access so that by the time it exits the pipeline and into the ponds for for evaporation and 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 going into the ground well you know we we uh we we put sensors in and so we're better able to dose chlorine so we're using less chlorine gas when dosing because it less chlorine gas and less residual at the end of that pipeline it's better for the environment and of course better for operational costs.
Excellent, thanks guys I appreciate it uh council member Walter I saw your hand go up do you still have a question or comment?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor um I I don't know whether these are questions or just stating the obvious but uh Mark you had mentioned the um the chlorine tank that uh seven hundred and fifty thousand gallon tank um am I reading the chart correctly uh item number sixteen on page thirteen that it's one-point-five million to renovate that or am I?
No, this this is putting in a a new tank uh so yeah so council member Walter this is this is adding redundancy to to what should have been a redundant system because all our water flows through that chlorine contact tank it to it's it's mandated by state law and so you know you have to maybe water that makes it through the filter process needs to get chlorine dosed to keep keep it from bugs growing in it so you 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 hold it in this tank before you pump it into the system and so that tank has been in service since nineteen eighty-two I believe and and you know you should never have any facility in that length of service without emptying it and reconditioning it and bringing it out of service so uh it's vitally important to have a redundant system there and and it'll add you know we we could add a little bit more capacity to the plant because the throw throughput for the plant right now are the pumps once we we rejig the pumps to put newer pumps in there we'll be able to put more capacity through the treatment plant but again the 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 critical link there are the chlorine contact and it's one tank we needed dual tank each you know dual tank should have been put in in my opinion you know when the plant was was redeveloped.
Well, let me take that uh on my second thought then um you you know I guess it was a couple of years ago we got fined in the wastewater treatment plant because we didn't have something painted the proper color and I think it was like a ten or twelve-thousand dollar fine we had to pay um so so talk to me a little bit if this chlorine tank fails or i- if if I mean could it fail and what would the fine look like how would we get our water supply?
Uh it it would it if it were to fail we wouldn't make contact time we could still deliver water to the city however it would not be portable so at that point we would tell our our consumers boil your water do not drink it and that's that's a disaster for any water system to get to that point so I'm trying to uh you know avoid that possibility because I don't want to issue a boil water notice because you know our water treatment system has failed.
Yeah, well you you know I mean we we hear a lot of uh concerns about increasing the water rates the way we want to um to do the things we have to do but um I I I think we don't look at the fines that could be levied against us by the state water agency.
Oh yeah and exactly and I I wouldn't want to guess what the state board would find us for that incident because you know I've never had that happen in my career and I don't want to go there but there would probably be a fine levied against the city's water system I mean you you look at the consolidation efforts that's happening statewide and a lot of these smaller water systems that can't you know they had the lack of governance they lack the operations those systems are just being removed from from service basically because the states that's just unacceptable.
Yeah, and you and again you give me a perfect segue into six acres water in in South Cloverdale I think at the public works committee the other night uh we we discussed the impacts that that would have on our water system and if that was uh accounted for anywhere in the capital improvement what it needs to be.
No, it it is not we're assuming that if that consolidation happens it will be paid for by the state of California and that's for both water and wastewater at least that's that's our optimistic goal is that those systems would be brought up to to our standards up to modern standards and it would be paid for fully by proposition one which is a statewide proposition that pays for water improvements.
Well, I saw a memo coming down somewhere David I think it might have been from you um or or Kevin what the reimbursement would be eight million or seventy thousand a home or something but you know I'm just I'm always suspicious that we're going to be on the hook for some of that so thank you.
Thank you council member Walter and Mark uh council member Bagby?
Oh, thank you yeah just a sorry thank you just a a comment um you know I think that um Mr. Hildebrand's presentation it just you know uh page two bullet line Cloverdale has the lowest combined sewer water utility rates in the region while also having a backlog of deferred critical capital maintenance projects I mean basically what we did is we we bought a car and we didn't um budget for gas and insurance and a garage and you know everything that goes along with take with taking care of the car um so and now now we have to so um you know I and I and I certainly um am receptive and I listened and I listened to the concerns from the public and I I guess what what I would do is I would I would support just the easiest landing that we can for folks during during covid as far as the rates are concerned but there's just no getting around this um we we need to um we we have to raise rates because it's not that we're raising rates outrageously it's that we've been underpaying for years and not planning for um the capital improvements and the really necessary redundancies that we should have had you know all along so um you know it'll be interesting to go to the the workshop in April but I mean I I know that you know whichever plan we land on um rates are going to go up they're inevitable and um we we have to pay for um the we we have to pay for and plan for our our future and and hopefully we will have some development where we will be able to spread some of these costs over some um additional rate pairs it'll be part of the system because that really is the most that's the biggest part of the bill so um that's uh but thank you for you know going doing a deep dive and and going in again and explaining you know all of the issues and um so it's very helpful and and going forward to make a decision on this so thank you, Mr. Hildebrand.
Excellent, thank you council member Bagby vice mayor Cruz?
Yes, um I really appreciate the presentation and also it's um it's kind of an awakening moment because this is not happening only in Cloverdale this is happening throughout the state of California and there are very many areas that are really really underserved in the state of California especially in agricultural areas like ours um and and there are places where the utilities have to bring an oasis to a neighborhood because there's absolutely no water and no infrastructure and uh what I say to our citizens and constituents is that we are very lucky to have our own water system and our own uh plants we need to take care of that otherwise we could go without the necessary resources and uh not only that the state is watching over us and we either are going to be fine or be without services or both so it's it's time to stop kicking the can down the road and we need to face it it's unfortunate but water is an essential, thank you.
Thank you vice mayor Cruz any other questions or comments um on the presentation that we've received so far Mr. Lance please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor lower my hand here I have a couple of questions and I have a bunch of chicken scratches I went through and it's going to be a little bit for everyone here um first thing we need to purchase is a microphone for David Kelly so that I could hear because I caught about half of his words and I know they're answering a lot of these questions and I couldn't get close enough to my computer to understand what you were saying so I apologize if I ask questions you've already answered um I heard you talking about the the town you know the forged pipes under the ground and this town was not built for ten thousand plus people that's absolutely the first and foremost this town was built for you know your five six seven thousand the most and uh was never designed for what we're trying to create it to be um Mr. Rincon I think you'll probably answer the next couple of questions uh well seven and eight on the list how much water do they produce do you know right now currently or what their capacity is supposed to be?
Uh I'm just going to kind of guess at it because I don't have those numbers in front of me but you know originally when they were put in the ground they're producing about five hundred uh gallons per minute they've you know as way as wells age they they start to produce less water so I I believe they're both now in the three hundred range so we've lost capacity there.
And what are you expecting with the new well?
With the new well it's going to be developed we have property on the eastern side of the Russian River I'd probably see a well being put in in that area to kind of tap into a maybe with maybe a richer source of water for us uh but you know like we had to go through the hydrogeologic studies to make sure that that is tru- in fact true and then we could take advantage of that getting that water to the plant though we're going to have to probably hang pipeline on the first street bridge I know they're putting in a pedestrian bridge I've met with the county engineers and we've talked about how we can suspend our pipe under that proposed bridge.
Thank you yeah I did a I did a tour of the water treatment plants a couple of weeks ago and I I definitely miss see and agree with ninety percent of what we need here and uh it was good to see it firsthand to know you know first off the age since it's been there since I lived out there and seeing how how uh a lot of it is still the same machines um if we don't do the twenty-five percent growth that we have proposed for over the next few years how would that affect this?
Well, I don't believe yeah i- i- in terms of growth i- i- you have to uh uh put in new facilities uh like the new well the new well would would be for growth it'd be gr- growth you know to to provide for growth and that would be paid for by the developer so that's why we're not necessarily planning it's actively pa- planning it now it's once new newer projects are being built and we have the funds to do these projects that will kick them off um but in in terms of uh up upgrading our current infrastructure and that's primarily the bulk of the capital spending plan is to upkeep and and replace what's existing and what's existing it just supports where where the city is now there's no growth factors in them.
So when a new development comes in and it overloads a system do you have the developer pay for it or does is the city on the hook for that after they've put in the because there's a one-point-four million dollars proposed this development for just the well but there's a lot more to it than just that well and and so I'm nervous about.
Yeah, you're absolutely correct uh council member Lance uh I would probably pull in Kevin Thompson into discussion too but it's there's a whole process of of development agreements that we go through and they pay for much of the infrastructure that's going to be you know most of the infrastructure that goes in to serve the new residents they'll pay for the street they'll pay for the sidewalk they'll pay for the pavements they pay for the stormwater they pay for the water they pay for the sewer pipelines everything to serve them so it's it's covered by the development fees.
And so then let's see so then once we get to that when it affects the actual treatment plant system and we're looking at bigger systems more materials and things like that how how is the cost broken down I know that we you do it by meter size and things like that but there was a slide in here on But there was a slide in here on page 237 that said it equit- equitably allocates the revenue required between customer classes of service on a proportionate basis. And so I was kind of curious as to what that meant in a third grade level. Is it, you know, is it based upon, uh, affordable housing versus middle income versus a million dollar plus? Is it commercial versus residential apartment versus house? How is it broken down?
I'd be on that. Sure, yeah, I'd be happy to answer that. And, and, um, you know, we, we, we went through some of these concepts in detail last year. But I, I did leave it out of this presentation, so I apologize. That, it's really more the latter, what you were talking about, you know, what type of customers and how they drive costs. So, you know, some customers have large water meters and they use a lot of water. Others, um, don't use as much water and they have smaller meters and, and there's everything in between. So we're, we're really, in, in your specific case, we're, we're really looking at, um, the, the way that they use the system, how intensely they, they use the, the water system and allocating costs to them based on that. So you, we, we certainly cannot allocate costs based on who people are aside from, you know, a water customer.
Great, perfect. Thank you. So right now we're making approximately 100 million gallons more than we, we use. What are, what is our ultimate goal? Level I, with the wells and, and because I'm only focusing on the water right now, I understand the wastewater. I, I, I get that. I'm not going to argue with that. One goes with the other. And so I'm looking at this saying, how much more water do we want to produce? So that we push ourselves into a spot where we're having to expand our entire facilities that we can't afford, as well as doing infrastructure. If, if we keep making more and, and allowing more and growing more, then we're not going to be able to ever do infrastructure. We're just going to continue down kicking this can down even at these numbers and these rates. Am I wrong?
Well, I, I think, uh, again, uh, we, we didn't include this slide this time. And we can certainly, I think it might be benefit, benefit to include it, uh, for the public workshop. We, as a city, have done a tremendous job at our water conservation efforts. And our, our water use is, um, decreased to the tune of about a, about, I think it was about a million gallons. Is that right, Mark? Silverbrand, it was, uh, from our, our highest use to our current average use. Which enables us to, uh, then, you know, serve additional customers or growth. But I, but I think the point being is that, you know, the majority of the capital improvements really are necessary to, ju- just largely serve existing customers. And that's why with, with this, uh, current rate study, we really looked at very carefully these improvements and where there was any growth associated with it, you know, tagged, uh, development impact fees to it. And that, and, and the, and the well is probably the best example where, uh, it is, uh, Mark Silverbrand's presentation showed that's 100% funded by impact fees. So if we didn't have, um, any growth, we wouldn't go forward with that project, but it wouldn't affect rates. If we could, and that's, we could remove the new well project, uh, from the rate study. And I think it would have a negligible, uh, or near zero impact on, on rates. Is that, is that, is that accurate to say it that way, Mark Silverbrand?
Yeah, it would have, it would have no effect at all, uh, because we're not using rate money to pay for it. So it's not affecting the rates at all.
And this is kind of, except for the, the last point there, it, it was exactly my point is we as a community over the past, you know, few years have really conserved. And you're right, it's, it's over 100 million gallons, uh, according to the fa- the paperwork and the, the charts. And so when everybody conserves, their price went up for doing so. And now you're going to bring in more people to use their water. It seems to me like it's kind of a kick in the pants to those that worked hard to conserve and would like to have green grass, but don't get to at this point. And looking at the price of a new well at, say, one, I'm going to just make up 120, 100, or I mean, or sorry, 1.5 million to round up. And that's negligible when you're looking at 23 million. You're talking, you know, a very minimal amount of money to the people that would love to have that water already. So that's, that's my problem with what's going on here is we're building up for growth and I don't think that, that's the right idea. We truly need to make this focus on infrastructure only for the people that live here in Cloverdale.
Yeah, I think that the, maybe the, the key issue is while our system is designed to support production of so much water, we, we, we often have to be cognizant of the environment and, and, you know, just like as we are now, where, you know, very likely we are going to be, uh, discussing with council the possibility of implementing water, water usage restriction. But, but, you know, that, that doesn't mean that we don't need to make these improvements to continue to provide, uh, potable water. So, um, I, you know, I think if we took all assumptions of growth out of it, we'd still be looking at pretty close to the same, uh, proposed rate adjustments as we, as we are, uh, as, as we are right, you know, to- tonight. You know, the, the water conservation efforts really are driven by, you know, the, the supply and availability of water, which is kind of separate from our ability to, uh, you know, deliver that water to our customers in a safe and viable way. So it, it, yeah, the, I, I guess I'll just leave it at that, but.
And I'm not disagreeing with any of these rates that we have in front of us. I, I know that they're necessary. Like I said, I just think that we're going to be going right back into pushing our limits the second we grow 25% or, which is proposed in this town. And it's just, it's, it's not getting us anywhere. I, I agree with replacing the infrastructure. We definitely need it. However, we're going to put ourselves right back in our predicament in five years. And you're going to be looking at, you know, doubling our rates again. And I just think that it's looked, it's bad for the people that live here and that have been here for a long time, that have really worked hard to conserve and do what's right, to push their limits and make them pay more in the future because that's what's going to happen. And I'll just leave it at that for now.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Lance and David and, and Mark. And Mark, um, appreciate the, the dialogue on that. I saw Councilmember Walter, your hand went up. Is there anything you'd like to add at this point, sir?
Oh, just quickly, uh, you know, I run into that all the time, you know, we conserve water and my, my rates keep going up. And you, you, you know, I, I, I kind of sarcastically tell them, look, the water is free. Just go down the river and get it. You know, the money that we spend has to do with making it a product that you can drink and delivering it to your town. You know, we, we don't pay anything for that water. We suck it out of the river. And, um, um, you know, a lot of times they, they kind of get that. It's the infrastructure they're paying for, not, not the water. If they cut their use by 75%, rates would still go up because we have to, as a result, get more money to do the infrastructure. So I don't know. It's hard convincing people when, when money's coming out of their pocket, you know?
Vice Mayor Cruz?
People like me have a, a bill of 300 as a, as, and as a city council member, I've been looking at this saying, okay, my bill's going to be five to 600 in five years. That's what, that's the part I look at. I understand the water use and the infrastructure. I get that. I totally do. It's just as hard to swallow when it's, it becomes a mortgage payment almost.
Sure.
You know, there's no way that you're going to find any community in the world that has the infrastructure for what the reality of the, of the towns are. No community was ever built for more than 20, 50, 500, 2,000. But that's the reality of the world. We have growing population in the world and that is not going to stop. Unless we have a one child limit like in China, we're going to continue to have children. And, uh, you know, I just moved here and I'm paying as much as anybody else, either I was here for a long time or not. And we don't live in, in an environment or in a terrain that is friendly to grass. We are in a desert. We have invaded the desert. We've made it livable for us. So, you know, there has to be a compromise between protecting the environment, observing, uh, human growth and human growth requires housing. And, uh, we also need to start thinking about how we're going to move people. You know, the movement of people is a very controversial issue too. And we used to be in little villages and never leave those villages, but that's not the way the world is today. So all these issues that we are addressing, water, electricity, uh, trash collection, pipes, big pipes, small pipes, ponds, et cetera, it's what we have to deal with. And, uh, I used to pay two cents for a stamp. How much is a stamp? And they were discussing the, the price of stamps for today. You can almost not mail a, a letter anymore. So that's the way it goes. It's unfortunate, but, um, we're growing as a, as a, as a world. And that's why people want to go to Mars or something if it's not already destroyed.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Cruz. Um, I like, I like the concepts where the, um, the, the, the rates, a- a- as you mentioned, Mark Hildebrand, during the, the, the recovery and, and coming out of COVID, the, the rates were lower. And then there is four years of, of a rela- you know, relatively higher rate increase and it tapers off again on the back end. When, when staring down the barrel of the inevitable, I, I like that pro- approach because it gives people an opportunity, um, to adapt. And, and one of the recurring themes that I, I try and, and, and keep in mind as I navigate through, through policy and what's asked of us as council members is what, what can I do to allow folks to control their own fate the best that they can? And affording them the time, because despite our best efforts, you know, even if we get a thousand people to participate in the public workshop, that's 8,000 people that will, uh, you know, be surprised by this. And so it, it does afford them the opportunity to adapt and, and make changes rather than what we saw kind of in November, uh, and not in all the scenarios, but in, I believe it was scenarios one and three, where the, the one had a, a really pretty significant rate increase that would have happened in January. And then another one subsequently in July, six months later. And, and that's what, what kind of scared me off as a council member. So as I see these new scenarios that have been kind of put before us, I, I, I find myself a lot more confident to discuss with constituents in the community that, you know, a- as we discussed this evening, continuing to neglect our infrastructure would be a fool's errand. But I, I can say that, that, you know, hey, we're going to ramp these, these rate increases up. So if, if you can't afford to change your landscaping now and, and you might change some of your water habits within the next year, that those, those funds might become available to start making those changes and those adaptations in, into how they, they, they choose to utilize the water that's available to them. Where I will admittedly find myself stuck between a rock and a hard place as that dialogue happens is when they say, well, don't you raise my rates once you conserve water? But, you know, w- we're not, we're not dealing with anything where no, we're not going to do this is an appropriate answer. So the, the, the least objectionable outcomes that I've seen put before me this evening caused me to reflect and be grateful for the extra work and, uh, quote pencil sharpening that I heard throughout this presentation. Yeah, so, so thank you for that. And, and that really concludes my, uh, my, uh, you know, pontification here. I, I did see Councilmember Bagby's hand go up and, oh, and, and student liaison Jennifer, you can go right afterwards. Absolutely. Thank you for, uh, thank you for participating.
Oh, thanks, Mr. Mayor. And, you know, and I think I mentioned this in some of the previous studies as well. But, you know, through our CPA and Bayren, there are a number of, um, on-bill finance programs. There are going to be several programs through, there's e- e- existing now. You can apply to Skype with this, which is Sonoma County Energy Independence Program for, um, water efficiency, loans for your, for your home. So a- a- as we move forward with, um, the rate increases, which are inevitable, you know, one of the things that we'll need to do is work with the chamber and, um, do a lot of community outreach about the resources that are available to do what you're talking about, uh, mayor. Uh, you know, on your own, with your own home and, and your own business and take advantage of, um, you know, technologies and, uh, products. And, you know, maybe cha- changing your idea about, you know, what a, what, what a, um, a landscape in a Mediterranean climate should look like year-round, things like that. So I, I think that, you know, while we're doing this, we also need to get information out to folks uh, about, um, the resources that, that they have to, to take advantage of, you know, doing as much water conservation. I, and, you know, honestly, I think that, and I've said it before, you know, our relationship with water has to change. We've taken it for granted. Um, we've taken the fact, yeah, that the Russian River, we've taken for granted that the Russian River is there and that we have water rights that date back to the 1800s. We've taken for granted that we have the lowest water and sewer rates in Sonoma County and that we haven't been budgeting for the necessary infra- infrastructure. And, uh, we can't afford to do that any longer. So, um, we'll need to, you know, that, help folks, um, adjust to these new realities by both, you know, making the right choice as far as how we're going to structure the rate increases, but also, you know, making those resources available to them so that they can be, uh, as water efficient as, as possible.
Yeah. And, you know, one of the personal experiences I'll share is, uh, you know, before we even got into these dialogues about rate studies, I am not one who wants to go out and mow a lawn every 10 days. And when I saw the, um, playground wood chips that we ended up putting in the playgrounds in lieu of the, the rubber mulch, I thought, well, I have young children and they like to play in my front yard. And if this is designed for a playground, maybe I'll just plop this in my front yard, you know? And, and so I, I think there are, there are options out there for folks. We're, we're, we're just going to need to do what we can that's reasonable to afford them the opportunity to make those pivots. And, and communicating with the chamber, I think, is incredibly inspired. And, uh, and, and, you know, capitalizing on the incredible momentum that they've gotten with their social media pages as it is to start, um, altering some of the efforts into ensuring that this is, is as painless as, as one can expect. You know, it's like going to the dentist. You know full well it ain't going to be pain-free, but you hope it'll be, you know, a- as painless as possible. So anyhow, um, a- at the risk of, of really getting into this, uh, for, for quite some time, because it's a very important topic, uh, we have a public workshop that's coming in April and we will see this, uh, brought back to us in, um, a subsequent meeting in the middle of April. And then it looks like, uh, things will start moving forward from there. And before I move forward, Jennifer, thank you, uh, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to turn off my camera just in case you guys can hear me. So I was going to say really quickly that I agree with Melanie that we have rejected fund money into this process. And it's urgent to have healthy water or else it will become a problem. And I just wanted to thank both Mark for the presentation. And, uh, um, the day is that?
Yeah, we, we, you did cut out, you did cut out a little bit, Jennifer, but we heard that, um.
We did talk to your superintendent. Let's see if something happens.
Mayor, the, the tech department from the high school is supposed to go see Jennifer this week. I know they contacted me to try to get ahold of her. So hopefully they can inform her.
Okay. And, and I think I, I captured that and I, I don't want to take words from her, but she, she acknowledged, um, Melanie's comments on aging infrastructure. And I, I believe she talked about the importance of clean water to the community. And then, uh, she thanked, uh, Mark and, and city staff for the, for the presentation. And, uh, for me to put it out there to whoever's listening and, and whatever, whatever I can do to help support Jennifer so that we can hear her and, and really benefit from her participation, um, I'm happy to help with that and support it in, in whatever way I can. I am incredibly proud each time our student liaisons join us for the level of participation uh, that they've done for each of these meetings, for, for topics that are incredibly complex. And, um, as, as connection becomes, uh, more and more of a, of a utility, something that we really require in order to move forward productively, um, I, I'd, I'd like to see that our, our student liaisons have what they need in order to participate in these meetings. So anything I can do to support that, uh, please, please let me know.
Just a little note, this is a great opportunity for, uh, communities to apply for the community grant that Mr. Townsend administers with Irene, because it would be great to see you. Because it would be great to see youths engage in projects to, to have, uh, landscape that adapts to our true conditions, um, here in Northern California.
Sure. All right, you guys, um, I do want to at least see if any hands went up from the public. I know this is a very, um, oh, I just got a message here from, from, uh. Okay. So, you know, a- absolutely. So, um, Jennifer wrote a message that she is working on improving her wifi and just thanked us. And, and she's let us know that she's going to watch on, on YouTube. And, and, uh, you know, Jennifer, thank, thank you, really. I mean, you're always welcome here and, uh, your input is incredibly valuable. And, uh, I, I do capture ninety percent of it wearing headphones. So please don't feel too bad that we can't hear you at all. It just sometimes, uh, you do cut out for, for a little bit there. So we will help you work on that. City staff, uh, I'm sorry, Irene, real quick, did any hands go up, uh, for this particular item from the public? I know it's a pretty big, big one for everybody.
No, Mayor, no hands are raised.
Okay. City staff, uh, do you guys have the instruction that you need from us in order to move forward on this item?
Yes, we do, Mayor. We'll, we'll, um, be working on a, a, you know, noticing a public workshop, um, in getting the word out via our website as well as social media. And we'll, we'll obviously, uh, share with council and, and, you know, encourage as much community participation as we can.
Let's make sure we get that to the chamber too, because I know businesses, their rates will go up also. So they, they should have, and I'm sure you thought of that, but it just, it popped into my head.
A- absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, guys. All right. So moving on to the next item. And we, we, well, let's go on to the next item. We'll do a recess after this one. So, uh, item number ten, uh, resolution, no, 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 we're on item number fourteen. Uh, update on the Cloverdale, uh, Cloverdale Governance Manual. David, I'm led to believe that you and Irene have, oh, man, I totally forgot to thank Mark again. The, the, we're getting to the point where I'm gonna start hitting faux pas, man. Y'all gotta help me. So. Um, David, I understand you and Irene put a considerable amount of work into the, uh, governance manual. You have a matrix for us to consider as a council. And, um, kind of what you're looking for from us tonight is, is guidance on, on where to start focusing your efforts. So, uh, without further ado, please take it away.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Um, a- as you know, the, the, the council requested that we hold a public workshop to discuss, uh, updating the governance manual. And because we, we, we felt to be as productive as possible for our public workshop, that it would be beneficial if we, uh, checked in with the council on, uh, proposed update of the manual. Uh, you know, for, for, for the public, the, the governance manual, uh, has, is, you know, is, is now really out of date and it hasn't been, you know, kept updated for, uh, a, 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 a period of time since it was adopted by council, um, back in, um, uh, twenty twelve, uh, well, twenty eleven, excuse me, late twenty eleven. And what staff has prepared is a matrix identifying, uh, existing sections of the governance manual as well as proposed new sections. We did a comprehensive review of other jurisdictions, other cities, uh, governance manuals or, uh, guiding policy documents. And, and really tried to assess where our do- our governance manual, uh, needs to be updated. And so what's, what's reflected in your packet is, is a matrix that identifies, uh, both existing sections and proposed new sections. And, and, and we, we took that matrix and, uh, prepared a draft outline for a document. What we'd like to do tonight is just do a, a really a check in with council um, on the proposed new sections and, uh, the existing sections to ascertain that whether we, we captured the essence of what council would like to see in terms of an updated governance manual. What we'd like to do as staff is, is do the heavy lifting. Wh- once council agrees on what the, what are the key themes and sections that they'd like to see in the governance manual, staff will prepare a, a draft governance manual reflecting that outline that's presented in your packet and any changes or modifications that you recommend tonight. We'll then bring it back to council. Um, and we think that would be the opportune time for council to, to actually then workshop kind of a final, final draft of a governance manual. Um, so what we, what we were seeking tonight is, is really your, your feedback and input on the matrix and draft outline as it was presented in your agenda packet. And you, you certainly don't have to do it tonight, uh, but we want to, uh, ensure that you have the opportunity to review it. And if you, if there's anything we're missing or if there's any additional sections to give us that feedback so that we can make sure we develop a draft document for, for council's consideration that reflects your collective input. And then we think it would be valuable at that point in time to then hold that workshop so you can do a little bit of a deeper dive, uh, on the language, uh, and, and address, you know, the policies after, uh, after it's been actually prepared. So that, that was, uh, the, the, the thought process behind what we put in your agenda packet for your consideration this evening. And we're happy to entertain any questions or thoughts about what we've presented in terms of the matrix and the draft, the draft, uh, proposed outline for, for a comprehensive update of the governance manual. And I want to, I want to, uh, give significant accolades to our, our city clerk Irene, uh, as well as our, um, finance and HR analyst Shannon Peterson. Uh, they've been working to, uh, do the necessary research on other policies to really update that, uh, that outline. Um, and, you know, we're ready to go once, once council says, yeah, this reflects what we'd like to see. Uh, we'll again, we'll populate that with, with, uh, you know, what we view are some of the, kind of the best practices in, in terms of, um, tho- those, uh, themes and sections. And again, bring it back to council for, for consideration. So, uh, thank you to Irene and Shannon for their, for their work in preparing the matrix and the, in the outline.
Excellent. Thanks, David. And, and I absolutely echo your thanks to Irene and Shannon. I wasn't aware that Shannon was involved. So please, uh, express our gratitude, uh, when you have the opportunity or, or Suzie for that matter, if, if more appropriate. Um, Councilmember Bagby, I see your hand is up. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I just want to say, uh, thank you to Shannon and Irene for diving in and getting us kind of a first draft to work with at, at, you know, twenty eleven. Manual is really dated, um, really not up to speed with, you know, so many of the, the other, um, manuals that I've, I've researched and, and looked at from across the street. Um, just a, a, a couple of comments. And I like the way you kind of did the, the matrix with the new item and the existing item. And there were, there are two things that kind of caught my attention. I'm just kind of trying to get back to the, um, there we go, to the app, to the, to the grid. So kind of on, just to kind of get, it, it, it may not require any kind of change, but just so that folks know, on page two ninety under legislative matters. First of all, yeah, I think having, um, a legislative platform is really important for us going forward. Because I think as this is, as it indicates in here, a lot of times, you know, as mayor or, um, you know, is, and, uh, or a topic may come up to the, the city manager's a- attention. And things move fast in Sacramento and Washington and we need to just get a letter turned around. There isn't time to wait until the next council meeting. There just, there needs to be, just like we have on so many of our, our regional boards, a, a, a pretty clear legislative platform that everybody is, has agreed on so that when it's really clear that a matter that is, we don't, really important to the city of Cloverdale is, you know, comes up in a bill and we either want to support it or we want to oppose it, or we want to make recommendations to amend it, that we can just turn that around and get it out, um, without a, a lot of worry. So that, that's really important. But I also just want to sort of want to let, um, you know, the rest of the council know, you know, I'm, I am, I think, I believe Vice Mayor Cruz also serve on policy committees at the League of Cities. And I just want to let you know, when, when I'm there, um, and I think that's the practice of everybody in the room, we give our opinion. We're not there representing the city of Cloverdale's opinion on a particular topic that's coming before us. And we have kind of freewheeling, um, back and forth, uh, you know, conversations about the pros and cons of particular, um, you know, legislation and, and certainly features of legislation. So I just want to know, I want you to want to let you know that, you know, I think that that falls outside of, um, you know, that, that particular topic. The, the other thing that I'm a little concerned about, and I, one of, it was one of the reasons that I really brought up wanting to, um, revise the, the manual, um, is the use of electronic and, and, um, use of, of email, uh, on page two ninety-two. It was, um, it's not been the practice unfortunately for council members to consistently use city email and for purposes of, um, Public Record Act requests. This is really, um, essential. And I think it's an essential part of, um, the transparency that we, uh, provide to the public. So I like to see stronger language in that area regard, you know, requiring council members to, um, to use and do business via, um, city email. I think that that's important for, you know, how, um, we, that we conduct ourselves in an above board way and make it as easy as possible for the city clerk to do searches when we do, when we do have Public Record Act requests. And I add on to this too, is that if we're really looking at going, you know, improving the phone system so that council members can actually, you know, have a usable voicemail box that, um, we include that. Um, and it's kind of, we're, we're, we're kind of in a, a transition place where we, we don't have a, a modern voicemail system. We don't have a voice system, but we more than likely will. And I think that that, um, there needs to be policy, you know, covering that as well. So that's just kind of what stuck out to me that, um, and, and then, and then this, 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 the last thing too, is that I know that when I was doing research on this, I noticed that, um, a lot of cities have, um, creeds or codes of conduct that are part of their, um, their manual. And they're really clear on their website that, you know, these are the values of the community. This is how we treat each other. This is how we conduct public meetings with respect. And this is what, you know, our, our philosophy is. And they just really, you know, put it out there that they're, they're to, to conduct the business of the city. You know, not insult people, not tear people down. And that at least the council members and the staff, uh, have agreed to treat each other, you know, in a, in a, a very specific stated manner that's based on respect and professionalism. And I think I had submitted a couple of examples of, you know, what I'd like to see, um, included in as part of, um, our manual and, and on the website. And I, you know, I think that that and this governance manual, it, again, needs to be on the website, needs to be a living document, needs to be something that we refer to and we refer members of the public to, say, this is how we do business. And it's not just what we, how we say we do business. It's actually how we really do conduct ourselves, um, and, and conduct ourselves in the public. So, um, I think this is a great skeleton to kind of, at, you know, and rough draft to, to, to start our work on. And I, yeah, look forward to working on it further. But I think this is a great start because there's nothing worse than starting with a blank page. So you've provided us with a, a rough draft and I really appreciate all the work that went into it. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bagby. Any other questions or comments for the governance manual? David, Irene, um, city staff, I, oh, please, Vice Mayor Cruz.
So we can, uh, still go ahead and submit suggestions and so on by next, next meeting, correct? Cause I'm too tired to discuss it.
No, yeah. And, and the, the next step from here is still the, the workshop. And so I, I imagine that leading up to the workshop and, and then during the workshop, you can, you know, that, that's where we'll really get into kind of the weeds of the language and, and the intent and, and, uh, and, and things on the other side of the equal sign. What, what we're looking for today is, is whether we agree that the roadmap that has been laid before us will make for a productive workshop. Or if there's any feedback we'd like to give that we feel would, would, would steer that workshop in a, in a more productive direction. And, and so with that being said, any, any kind of questions or, or comments about, about that? Yeah, please, Vice Mayor, go ahead.
So, uh, I, I'll just, uh, request from David and Irene that if there's any other resource that we should consult as we review this, to please go ahead and, uh, put it forth so we can review. Uh, I'm sure that there's some city, other city governance manuals that perhaps would, uh, look like what we would aim to have. And, um, it would be nice to see what other people have done, has, has done. And, and anything else that would be useful for us to be totally prepared to go through ev- all these words. And, um, as an editor, I would be more than happy to do so, but not right now.
Understood. Thank you, Vice Mayor. David, I, I, I concur with the sentiment so far. I think we have an excellent roadmap for the, for the workshop that will be held for the council. Um, it would seem to me that the next steps are to identify how that public workshop will be held and when. And then kind of, uh, you know, kind of soliciting the, the, the council for availability and then kind of stepping forward from there. Um, are, are there any aspects of what you are looking for this evening in which to move forward that you feel you are missing?
Well, I, I think really what we are seeking tonight is, is, uh, council's concurrence on, on the proposed approach. And if we, if staff missed anything or there was anything that you really wanted to see, um, included in the governance manual that wasn't identified in the outline. I think, uh, uh, Councilmember Bagby, you know, raised, for example, code of ethics and conduct. And that, that's included in the outline. So, um, you know, we'll, we'll, we will, we will capture that. And, uh, you know, I, we don't have a, I didn't develop, uh, we didn't provide a, excuse me, a, um, detailed timeline, uh, but, you know, we're, you know, we're, we've been holding regular meetings and are committed to moving this forward. Our, uh, next step would be to provide, you know, a draft document before the workshop to council. So you have the opportunity to review it and provide input. And then that way, maybe again, I think would facilitate, uh, uh, you know, more collaborative conversation around, you know, what kind of changes you might want to make to the draft language.
David, as council members may, uh, take it upon themselves to look up, uh, governance manuals of cities, maybe seeking out best practices or anything that you and Irene may identify and send out. Is there an opportunity still moving forward if there are themes and indices that we may learn from best practices elsewhere to still, uh, provide that information to city staff for consideration?
Absolutely. I think, um, you know, stat, ultimately our, our goal is to provide a da- a draft document that, you know, hopefully you look at and say, great job and, you know, meets with our approval. Uh, but, you know, we're, 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 we understand, you know, council is gonna, gonna look at it closely and, you know, want the, uh, document to really reflect the, the values of council. And, and, and certainly understand that, you know, there, there are going to be adjustments made to, you know, reflect the, the individual input. But, uh, yeah, I mean, we, we're, we're, uh, certainly looking at resources and, and doing our best to capture, you know, what, what we see are the best practices. But, uh, i- i- if, you know, any council member sees a policy that they really like, uh, and think this is something we need, uh, please, please share it and we'll, uh, we'll take a look at it. You know, the more resources, the better, um, you know, and, and, you know, the, the team isn't going to be limited to, uh, just the three of us, you know, as we, we grow, grow this, this document. You know, I've already shared with Jose, we'll want to, want his input as the city attorney on some of the, 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 the critical legal sections. Uh, and, and, you know, he'll bring his experience to it. So we really do see it as going to be a team effort to bring forward, you know, a, a comprehensive update of this, of this manual.
Excellent. Thank you.
It's gonna keep us in, in line, right, Jose?
Excellent. Irene, did any hands happen to go up in the public as we waited our way through the governance manual conversation at all?
No, Mayor, no hands are raised.
All right. Thank you. David, it sounds like you have what you need to move forward from here. We'll look forward to your next update and, uh, how you see us, uh, transitioning towards that workshop. And, uh, again, to all the city staff that participated in this initial draft, I truly thank you. I think you put together a comprehensive document that gives us a good roadmap to move forward. All right. And move on to the next item here. Uh, as a matter of fact, before we do that, we're going to take a quick recess. We're going to do seven minutes. I would like everyone to return at nine forty-four, please. Welcome back, everybody. Thank you. Um, we're gonna move on to, uh, item number fifteen. This is direction to the mayor to support appointments made by Sonoma County mayors and council members association, city selection. This is direction to the mayor to support appointments made by Sonoma County mayors and council members, Association City Selection Committee and Board of Directors. As you may remember, at our last meeting in February, there were a few seats that went unfilled because there was no desire for folks to be on them. And we had, I think it was three positions that were going to be up for discussion tonight. And we received one letter of interest for one position from a Mr. Patrick Slater, and it's for the LAFCO alternate, I'm led to believe.
That's correct.
And so
I'm gonna, you know, happy to get into. I'll support Patrick for that. I think that as former mayor Sebastopol and as a practicing architect, I think he's overqualified. And yeah. So I, yeah, I'd support the slate that we've got before us, which, you know, there are some empties, but I'm not gonna do any of them. So if anybody else wants to step up, now's the time.
Patrick is always on time, okay?
Nothing if not punctual. That's right. All right, cool. Appreciate it. So that's fifteen done. I, I, I understand the direction and, and will absolutely, you know, thumbs up that. So gonna move into, wait. Did any member of the public happen to have their name hand up, Irene? I see you nodding, Jose. I got you. Look, is that your text coming through right now telling me? No, no, it's not. All right.
No hands are raised, Mayor.
All right, good.
Are we not, are we not gonna continue like the Sonoma County Oversight Board Committee?
There is no letters of interest or?
Nope. Nobody's applied for any of these.
No, Gus, it's, it's your time.
Yeah, well, listen, I, I just want to make sure that the man knows that he has our discretion to vote for, you know, if you have to change our recommendations, please feel free to go ahead and do that. Or somebody shows up with a letter, you can vote for them, okay?
I think the mayor should go for the Rand board, but you know.
So moving on to subcommittee.
I'm clear, I'm clear.
Thanks, you guys. I appreciate the laugh. No, that's, that's good. Anyhow, I, I definitely hear the guidance and, and appreciate the leeway should something unforcement occur. Moving into subcommittee reports, first we have finance, admin and police. We're gonna meet on April the fifth at five. I feel like we got into some really good conversation last time, Melanie, and yet it is escaping me to give kind of a, an overview, but some good stuff coming out of the finance, police and admin. So feel free to join us on Friday the fifth. From there, we're gonna transition into planning and sustainability, please.
Next meet on April twentieth and we'll get an update on the community development planning law. And yeah, Vice Mayor Cruz and I are just getting up to speed on, on that subcommittee. So looking forward to doing some good work this year.
Excellent. Public Works, please.
We had our meeting on the twenty-third, which was actually last evening. Next one is May twenty-fifth. We've got an update from Mark and Cohen and Eric on SB one projects. And you can read the rest of the minutes. Thank you.
Excellent. Joint City Fire, please.
Ask schedule.
Excellent. Joint City School District, please.
We had a pretty interesting meeting last week. I'll just say it's probably the worst meeting that I have been involved in in the years that I've been involved in these government meetings. I, I took for granted the agenda that we had. I thought that the city and the school had made some great negotiations. And so I brought all the players into the meeting, expecting to have everybody hold hands and be happy with the, the outcome of the agenda. Come to find out, nobody was, had been talking to each other and it really went into some bad words. And, and I promise our meetings will never look like that again. And I will never take for granted thinking that everybody's talking and that all things are already handled behind the scenes. So our next meeting is scheduled for May seventeenth, and I'm really hoping that between now and then, there will be a lot of work done and some humble pie eaten by, by everyone involved.
Understood. Thank you, Councilmember Land. Homeless Community Advisory Group, please. I believe that's you as well, sir.
It is. And I'm excited to say we have a meeting scheduled. David, if I'm wrong, it's, it's scheduled for April thirteenth at one o'clock. What I don't know is if it's going to be a Zoom or if it's at the firehouse, because it says the firehouse.
Yeah, it'll probably be a, a Zoom meeting or a virtual meeting, just to facilitate attendance by the, the group, the community advisory group.
Really appreciate you making that happen. I, I really do. I'm glad we're getting it moving forward again.
Absolutely.
Excellent. Great work, you guys. Well, the way to collaborate.
Regarding, regarding that, I think that before that meeting, Gus, Gus, David and Todd and I should meet because we have been attending homeless meetings throughout the county. And we should be up to date on, on the information. Make sure that everybody has the same information.
And just if I may, Mayor, just a quick point, please don't meet together. Cause that'll be a quorum. So if you need briefings on what's been going on, maybe just individual briefings would be great, or a two and then a one.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Thank you for the guidance, Jose.
I remember not emailing any of us, only one of us, and using our email, our city email.
Thank you. I saw council member reports came through in writing. Any additional verbal reports at this time? Thank you. Any informational reports seeing none on the agenda? Thank you. Legislative reports, letters of support or opposition, seeing none on the agenda? Thank you. City manager, city attorney reports, please. Oh, Vice Mayor Cruz, please.
There was a letter from Kristen Sullivan regarding supporting a particular effort and also the good daily acts or something as such. If that hasn't been reviewed, is it possible, Mayor and city manager to go over those? Because I don't know if there were any deadlines on those to pieces of correspondence. I did send it to Irene.
I don't see it on the agenda here. And David and I have a meeting scheduled for Tuesday. As long as we're not outside the timeframes there, we can make sure we can address that.
Okay, thank you very much. And perhaps if it's within the timelines to bring it back for the next council.
Thank you. Sounds like a good plan. All right. City manager, city attorney reports, not seeing anything on here. Anything you guys want to add for the time being? Seeing none. Okay. Status impact on current impact, or sorry, status update on current impacts to water supply. Understanding we had a pretty robust report on our rate study and, and water supply was kind of brought in as, as part of that dialogue. Mark, is there anything you wanted to call out that we may not have been made aware of already this evening?
Not really. We, yeah, the drought continues and it's continuing to spread. So just be aware.
Thank you, Mark. Status update on current emergency discussion and possible direction related to COVID nineteen. David, as part of your report, would you mind a brief overview on steps taken as of right now and immediate future steps for opening City Hall, please?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. The staff has been working on a reopening plan for City Hall. And also as part of that, you know, evaluating, you know, whether, whether we'll have in-person meetings. So there's, you know, ongoing conversations with the mayor about, about that and how that might function. We are currently looking at how we plan to reopen City Hall. And our current strategy is to do it on a phased basis. We are making sure that we've got all the appropriate systems in place to, to do it, you know, safely. And, and still in accordance with, you know, current health protocols. And so we're looking very carefully at the guidelines in, in implementing a plan with staff to begin that reopening process. Don't have a specific date yet, but we, we will be announcing that as soon as possible. And, and, you know, we're, we are actively discussing how best to implement the plan to reopen City Hall with our staff. One of, one of the key issues for us is during this pandemic, we, we didn't backfill critical positions, both our front desk person as well as our deputy city clerk. So that's one of our key human resource issues that we're addressing. We're also in the process of implementing additional entry security at City Hall. So all of these things are in the works. And as we refine the timelines, we'll, we'll roll that out to council on, on how we're gonna reopen City Hall. And we'll have additional conversations with the mayor about staff meetings in person and/or in-person meetings with, with the council as well.
Excellent. Thank you, David. And I, I know reopening City Hall is very important to, you know, probably almost all of us on the council. I, I try not to speak for everybody, but I know it's come up from all of us that, you know, getting the public facing departments and stuff like that has, is, is something that's important. I- is it okay to ask that updates on our efforts to reopen be, be considered each time during this item for our future meetings, please?
Yeah, we can, we can add an agenda item to, to the council agenda. It's a status of reopening in City Hall.
Well, it seems to me, and I'm, I'm totally open for feedback on this, but it, it seems to me like, like it would be a subsection of, you know, update on the current emergency. Part of responding to this emergency was closing City Hall for understandable reasons. And also part of the response, I, I believe could be reopening. But, but totally open to feedback. I, I just hesitate to create more items on the agenda if, if we can consolidate them elsewhere. But like I said, I'm totally open to feedback here if any other council members want to weigh in.
Yeah, I, I don't need to hear about it until the tier calls for it, or, you know, the anticipated next tier calls for it. Because otherwise we're just spinning our wheels.
You know, I, I kind of agree with Melanie. But I also would like us to make sure that, you know, staff has gotten into the routine of working from home. And I'm sure they've changed some of their schedules. I'd like to make sure that we, we bring them back sensitively so that they can take care of their issues at home and, and still come back to work. Does that make sense? In other words, I'm just saying, let's not, let's be understanding if they need another week or so to work from home.
Yeah, I think, Gus, I think I'd really support that. And I, and I think it's, I've had some, you know, talks with, you know, folks at, at Cal Cities and, and other, and other places. And the feeling right now, especially for working families, is that they have just been under so much pressure and so much stress. And so just, and just because it might be deemed, you know, according to our tier, that, you know, that City Hall can, you know, should be open, that doesn't mean that they have childcare. It doesn't mean that they have elder care. And so, you know, I, I'm not, I'm not interested in, you know, draconian measures. I'm, I'm interested in, in what works for our team.
Yeah.
Yeah, I support our team.
And, and you said it perfectly, especially with, you know, with, with, with moms that are working at home that have kids, maybe.
Or dads who are working from home.
You know, they're not back to school yet. I think we have to be sensitive to that. So.
Yeah. So all I was suggesting that is there, and there, there's now an opportunity for you guys to provide that input regularly.
Here, if you don't mind. And I, I also think this is a, a public optics thing as well. You know, a lot of people have been working for the past year and have been dealing with all of this through the pandemic. So it looks good when we stand up together and say, hey, we're here for you and we're moving forward. And so it's, it's something that, you know, your own departments, your, your police department, your fire department, your public works, all the people that have been supporting this town over the past year. They're looking at you for leadership and they're looking at us for leadership. And so we need to stand up, be the leaders and say, hey, we're doing this the right way and we're standing up here for you. We're, we're taking, we're taking the right steps as early as possible. And that's the way I look at it.
All right. So I, I did not hear support for this to be a recurring item, David. So we'll, we'll go ahead and table that for the time being and appreciate the input, everybody. Where we are at, oh, I'm sorry, David, did that conclude your report on response to the emergency?
Well, I was just, it's just a real brief update on vaccinations. The, the, there's, the, the current vaccination data indicates that the Cloverdale and Geyserville zip codes on a per capita basis have been, you know, at the top in terms of vaccination rates. So it's really positive news. Countywide, Sonoma County has administered over two hundred and fifty-five thousand doses. Nearly forty-one percent of our population has received at least one dose and twenty-three percent have received, or, or excuse me, twenty-three percent fully vaccinated, forty-one percent have received at least one dose. And this, this data is, is, is moving in a positive direction on a daily basis. And it can be tracked on the socoemergency.org/vaccine website. Our chief is, has been routinely attending the Sonoma County Department of Emergency Management meetings and getting updates that are being provided. We, we know now we're in the red tier. We, in terms of the state, are at nearly three million vaccines. And once we hit the four million vaccine count, the blueprint for a safer economy will be adjusted further, which could, could qualify us in the relatively near future to move from a red tier to an orange tier, which would allow for further reopening of our, of our businesses and, and restaurants. So it's, it's, it's really positive news. There, there's still support to continue to practice appropriate health mitigation measures, including, you know, social distancing and, and wearing a face mask as well as washing hands. And so just want to continue that messaging that that continues to be a, a, a appropriate practice, you know, given the state of the pandemic.
Interview. Thank you, David. Vice Mayor Cruz.
Yeah, going back to opening City Hall, I, I also have a question. If did the majority of our employees get vaccinated? And this, is, is there something there that perhaps would keep us from opening, Jose, if people are not vaccinated?
And, and the answer is, is no, as far as if folks are for employees and not being vaccinated or folks not being vaccinated, being able to reopen. There's no, so, and, and I know David and I have talked about this with staff, it's very difficult to mandate, especially with everything that needs to happen with the unions and negotiations, et cetera. It's highly encouraged. And I, I bet the, I bet the mayor has also kind of encountered this in the, in the medical field, highly encouraged. I think most jurisdictions are highly encouraging it. But as of right now, I haven't really seen the mandated vaccinations. Folks haven't gone down that route. Now there's certain guidelines that will happen as far as if you're not vaccinated. I anticipate that the guidelines will be that you, you have to be kind of, you know, take extra measures. But recently, just this month, there's been even new legislation which even provides further days off and time off related to COVID-related time, that you needed for COVID-related time off. So it doesn't, you know, I don't see the big push on any type of penalizing or not opening or anything like that if you don't get vaccinated at this moment. But it is highly encouraged. Everybody's highly encouraging it right now.
And that, that executive order from Newsom was retro to January first, if I remember correctly. So there's gonna be a bit of a assessment period in looking at, well, anyway, we won't have to get into the weeds of that. But when there's, when it goes back in time, it, it adds a little bit of complexity, which is something we'll face. Sorry, David, I think I cut you off. I was trying to.
That was it, Mayor. Thank you. You covered it.
All right. Council direction on future agenda items, please. Please.
I, I was looking through the government, governance manual and through the last couple of meetings of bringing up some future agenda items, I'd like to actually discuss how we get our future agenda items as a future agenda item. Needing the majority to say we have it on there or things along those lines, like I was told. I, I'd rather make it to where if a council member wants something on the agenda, that it can be put on the agenda or something along those lines. Does that make sense to you?
The, the, the request makes sense. Absolutely. I think we can, you know, we're, we're probably gonna have to, as a majority, make the policy on that through the governance manual. So, so David, the, the question on the floor is, is there a pathway forward via the governance? So David, the question on the floor is, is there a pathway forward via the Governance Manual to dictate how items are added to the agenda? And if so, can we look at that, it would seem?
Absolutely. The Governance Manual currently provides guidance on how an agenda item is added. It provides that either the mayor or the city manager can add items. Or, or as I think the question that Councilmember Lance is asking, the council, through your deliberation, decides by a consensus whether to add an item to the agenda. And that's currently how it functions. And it tends to be a best practice because it, you could, if each council member can add items as they see fit, it can, it can tend to be, can lead to disorganization. Doesn't mean it will be as an end result, but you could in effect have counter items. Because one council member says, I want X agendaized, and then another council member says, I'd like Y agendaized. So then you start, you can, you can get competing agenda items. And so therefore, that's why there's usually a process for managing agendas so that it's done in a manageable way. But that can be set forth, it's a policy direction set by council.
Well, David and Todd, normally, this is processed through David and the mayor because there may be action that has been taken in the past or there's a pending issue that relates to what that agenda item is. So what I've done is I've asked David, has any action been taken or any comments have been made about X or Y? And then he says, yeah, we're going to put it in the agenda for, you know, in two months or something because of this, that, or the other or deadlines, or we need to rush it and so on. So if you, you know, like, if I want an agenda item and there's a plan already for that particular item, then it's kind of a negotiating thing, not that it's going to be kept out, but it's just a time, an issue of time management with the objectives that David.
I appreciate that. My problem I've had is the things I have suggested, I was told in my first meeting, we did not have anything unless there are action items on here. And now, since then, I've kept quiet and there's been a lot of discussion items that have been put on our agenda without a majority vote for future items. And so that is something that if I'm not going to be heard, I'll just go to the mayor or to the city manager and make it go that direction directly. Or if I bring up something during future agenda items that is already being acted upon, voted upon, or is in the future, it can be brought up at that point. You know, Mr. Kelly or the mayor, Mr. Mayor could say, hey, we're talking about that in a month. I would love to hear things like that versus crickets, because crickets are frustrating.
And. Yeah, I think we can probably hone in on the process a little better. Oh, sorry, Todd.
No, it's okay. I'm just saying that I don't like to, you know, have these kind of conversations because it shouldn't be this way. It should be a lot more positive and pushing forward together versus you saying, hey, why isn't anybody listening? You know, is my mic on here? So.
Sure. I appreciate that. I think there's an opportunity we can hone in a little bit because it was interesting to hear that the mayor and the city manager, but I've brought up two items since becoming mayor and have been told no. So I understand that I am one-fifth of a voting party. So anyway, I think we can hone in on that a little better. So David, that's something that will kind of factor into the workshop, I think, at the very least. And Councilmember Walter has some input he'd like to add as well.
Well, Jose, do I want to ask Todd to, I'm sorry, Councilmember Lance to give us some example? Or do you think it wouldn't be appropriate here?
And it's fine if you want to give some examples, Councilmember Lance, only to revisit those items. And maybe right now, we could follow the Governance Manual does, as the city manager mentioned, that does have in its section, I think it's page 276 of the package, of the packet. And it has placing items on agenda, and it does exactly as our city manager mentioned. It has that consensus requirement as far as future agenda items, reach consensus. Definitely if Councilmember Lance wants to bring that up and if items are getting consensus, then usually at that point, there's either a conversation about timing or the mayor and the city manager can work together on the timing to place it on the agenda. But that's, maybe that's something we could work on, as the mayor mentioned, when we talk about the Governance Manual. Do we want to talk, do we want to have a little more specifics about timing as well, if we can? Or approximately when items are going to come back? I don't, we could refine the process, but if examples want to be brought up, we are in the section of future agenda items at the moment.
And Councilmember Walter, I don't think it's a good time to get further into the weeds with this because then it starts a finger pointing, and I'd rather not do that. I don't like to do that. This is about as far as I'll go with it at this point. Points made.
Councilmember Bagby?
Yeah, and, you know, maybe we can look around at some other cities and see what they do, you know, follow some best practices. But it seems to me that our practice has always been that, you know, if we bring up items and there isn't any, you know, major opposition, that we, you know, at least why here, you know, conversate. It's kind of like, what I'm concerned about having something happen is that you're voting to, if we decide that we're going to vote to whether or not to agendize something, then we've already decided how we're going to vote on a topic that is going to come up, which is not being open to new information and open to deliberations and taking public comment. So, you know, my concern is that, you know, that when we have this future agenda items portion of the meeting, it's an opportunity to, you know, bring up items of concern. I mean, one example is that, you know, when a council member or all council members have received a considerable amount of correspondence on something, then it's appropriate to say, well, we have received considerable amounts of correspondence. And of course, you know, everybody's going to want the bar to be in a different place. So did you receive three emails or two emails? And, you know, how many from one side of an issue and how many from another side of an issue? And that gets really tricky. I don't think we can really put that in a governance manual. But, you know, maybe there needs to be some guidance in saying, hey, if you're going to bring a future agenda item, it can't just be out of left field. You need to say, you have heard from, you got to name names, you know. I have received correspondence, I've received phone calls, I've had a meeting, I've walked the property. And there are, you know, several members of the, of the community. And maybe it's, you know, the onus is then put on the council member to say, well, if you, you know, if you say to members, if members of the public come to you and say that they have a problem, you know, for instance, about their recent incidents with of dogs attacking other dogs and people who have them on leash. So, you know, if you get five or six pieces of correspondence, at what point do you, as a council member, say, well, I can request it's going to be put on a future agenda item, but there's no guarantee. I need you to come to the meeting and insist that it is put on, and mention it in public comment and insist that it be, you know, put on a future agenda item. So we're kind of, you know, trying to balance that. And then sometimes issues come up where it's really sensitive and people don't, don't want to, either they're shy and they don't want to talk in a council meeting and public comment or, you know, any part during the meeting. Or, you know, they're having an issue with a neighbor and they would rather, you know, keep it anonymous or keep it private. And they're asking you to say, as their elected representative, hey, I'm having this issue. Would you please discuss it at a future council meeting? Because I think it's, you know, bigger than just me and it's affecting my entire neighborhood, maybe the community. And so if we kind of subject it to, you know, you have to vote on it to even get it on a council agenda, which it happens, I know it happens at another city in Sonoma County. And it's very frustrating because that could represent, you know, 300 members of the community. But, you know, if three members of the council don't want to hear about it, it doesn't get agendized. So I think we just need to, you know, maybe find some best practices and, and, you know, and have an open mind and, you know, want to listen to some ideas. But I think it's, again, it puts the onus on the council member. You better have some emails or, you know, some people who are willing to come and give testimony or, you know, show that there's a real problem, a real issue before you ask to have it put on an agenda.
Thank you, Councilmember Bagby. Councilmember Walter?
Thank you. You know, Melanie, I don't know that I agree with that 100%. I think if a council member wants to have a discussion about a particular item and he wants to get everybody's input on it, it should be put on the agenda for a discussion item. Or at least with the guidance of the mayor and the city manager, put it on a subcommittee. But if a council member wants to bring something and everybody's telling them no, you know, he was voted into an office by his constituency. And if somebody, one of his supporters is asking him to bring something up, I think there needs to be a path so that he can do that.
I don't disagree with that. I can, I kind of, I think, I was trying to say that I kind of see both sides of it. Is that we can't, we're also, you know, we're charged with doing the business of the people and we can't just, you know, come up with things out of left field and, or maybe where they're bad timing and then just expect them to be agendized. But at the same time, it's like, I think that you have to have, you better be ready to back it up.
I think it's also, I think it's also a courtesy for the city manager because, you know, he is, he is charged with conducting research and providing appropriate information for us to make votes on policy. So, you know, the sooner we can tell our city manager and our mayor what things we are concerned about, the better that he can address that and organize it for us to have a discussion on. But I don't think that nothing should be, you know, like, we shouldn't be have a tape over our mouths if we wanted to. So, you know, definitely.
You know, I know if I wanted to bring something up for a future agenda item, I'm going to tell you about it. You know, and if everybody agrees, no, they don't want to do it, that's fine. But you're going to know I want to discuss this at a council meeting. You know, it's important to me, it's important to somebody in the community. And as far as coming out of left field, who's to judge whether it's left field or the right field? I mean, I just think if a council member wants to talk about something, future agenda item, even if it's for discussion, you know, there's not much of a staff report that has to be prepared. You know, I don't know.
So I want us to kind of, you know, summarize that, you know, we do have steps to take in this. I think we're going to have a lot of opportunity to give, to give feedback during the, during the workshop. But one of the things that we, that we have to consider is we don't have that workshop planned just yet. And items for future agendas is something that we're dealing with in real time. So I guess more to come. But we definitely have some differing opinions that we have to weed through a little bit. That's the nature of a council. And I think we'll find a productive pathway forward. Any final comments before I adjourn our meeting for the evening? Vice Mayor Cruz, please.
Yeah, it's just that apparently the way that, that meetings are conducted before was controlled by the mayor and the city manager. And maybe not in the last three or two years, but that has been the practice. And now we're kind of, what would I say, modifying our process because it's necessary for transparency too. And so that we can be the voice of our constituents. So it's very important that we do discuss this and that we break some bad habits too.
I could never remember a council member being told that he can't put something on the agenda. You know, I mean, I know in the past, if I've gone and talked to a city manager about something and they'd say, you know, why don't we do it at a subcommittee? Or, you know, I don't think that's appropriate, we talk it out. But, you know, if a council member wants to get something on the agenda and check the temperature of the other council members, if they want to get into that subject, I think he's got the right to do that.
All right. All right, everybody. Thank you so much for the meeting this evening. Appreciate the presentation. City staff, thank you as always for a comprehensive report. Councilmembers, thank you for your collaboration. Consider this meeting adjourned. Our next meeting is April the 14th for closed session at 5:00 p.m. Thank you.